All right, it looks like we are live. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order of the city council. It's a special meeting of the city council of the city of Crescent City, as well as our Measure S Oversight Committee. It is April 26th, 2021, 5:32 at this time. I am Mayor Greeno. Clerk, please pull the vote, or not pull the vote, but all the roll.
Okay.
Meeting right before this, so.
No worries. We'll start with the council first. Councilmember Altman?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Mayor Protem and Score?
I'm here.
And Mayor Greeno?
I am here.
All right, and then the Measure S Committee. Board Member Cruz?
I am here.
Board Member Matts?
Here.
Board Member Perry?
Here.
Vice Chair Keim?
Here.
And Chair Shalom?
Here. Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
At this time, let's stand and pledge allegiance to our flag. Eric, do you have a flag for us? Excellent. All right, ready and begin. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. And one nation.
One nation under.
In the invisible. With liberty and justice for all. Right. Moving on, we're going to open up our public comment at this time. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed towards the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Public comment is additionally allotted three minutes for each agendized item. If you would like to email us your public comment, you can email us at publiccomment@crescentcity.org. If you'd like to phone in your public comments, the phone number for that is 253-215-8782 with the webinar ID of 896-3200-5045. Or if you're attending this meeting on Zoom, you can just raise your hand. Do we have any public comment at this time?
We do not have any public comment from our Zoom attendee.
And Mayor, I have not received any emails.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar. We have just our meeting minutes from the April 12th Measure S meeting. Do we have anything concerning the minutes? If not, I will enter the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 12th. Measure S Committee meeting.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Protem and Score?
Yes.
And Mayor Greeno?
Yes.
And for the Measure S Committee, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Go ahead and pull the vote, Ms. Patch.
Board Member Cruz?
I approve.
Board Member Matts?
Approve.
Board Member Perry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Keim?
Yes.
And Chair Shalom?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our presentation, it's the one thing on our agenda tonight. It's the 2021-2022 Budget Recommendations Presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor Greeno, Chair Shalom, members of the council, members of the committee. I'd first like to just start by thanking you all for all of your time. This is our fifth meeting. I don't think a meeting has ended in less than two hours in any of our previous ones, and so there's been a lot of really good discussion. There's been a lot of really good impact, input. And it's been challenging to try to put it all together. Their community has a lot of needs. Measure S, as we've talked about it, does bring in 1.3 million, but the needs of our community outweigh a lot of those needs. So to hear the thoughts from the committee, to hear the thoughts from the council in prioritizing those needs has been really important for us as staff. And so I just wanted to say thank you, and we really appreciate the thoughtfulness that has gone into each of these meetings and the amount of time and effort that each of you has put into it.
Eric, I would follow that up with the same sentiments from, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the Measure S Committee, that we've been extremely grateful to be a part of the process and very impressed with all of the staff reports and the information provided. I can guarantee you that the city is putting their best foot forward in trying to put together the best plan for these funds that our wonderful community has granted to the city of Crescent City. So I think we're all very proud to be a part of this. So thank you to all of you, the council and the staff, for doing such a great job providing information for us to work with.
Excellent. Go ahead, Mayor.
I just wanted to say just a couple things. I just want to thank the Measure S Oversight Committee for all of their hard work, as well as the council. I mean, we're elected officials. We, in essence, in the end, the buck stops with us, but you guys are giving time of your own to make sure that this committee, I mean, this council is properly using the funds that the people have approved for us to use. So thank you so much for being here. You play an important part in this, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you into the future, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, from a staff standpoint, too, this, this community did come out and entrust us all with, with these funds. And with that becomes a great responsibility. And so I am very proud of where we are and the, you know, the work this staff has put in because it is that responsibility in working with the chief of police, Chief Griffin, on the police department side of things, Chief Gillespie on the fire side, and Mr. Olson on the street side of things, Holly Win on the pool, bringing it all together, way out of our finance director, Linda Lieber, you'll see some of her work tonight, as it's not just about this one-year plan, it's really about multiple years. So it's looking and making recommendations for this next year, but it's not without a plan for the future to really make sure that these funds go to those priorities of our community and then have the most impact that they possibly can. So with that, I will share my screen and we'll, we will do sort of one last PowerPoint presentation. And it's really just kind of a summary of where we've been, getting some more information that the committee, the committee has asked for in the past, trying to get that to you tonight. And then it is, it's all, it's about putting it all together. How does this all work, not only just next year, but into the future? So creating sustainability and resiliency for critical public safety needs. That's what it's all been about. City Fire, City Police Department, local streets, and the, and the pool. In the police department, we talked about additional officers. We talked about a detective position, canine officers, a lieutenant. We talked about having the equipment these officers need to be able to do their jobs. You can't have staff unless you look at the equipment that they actually have. So with that, it becomes vehicles for patrol, and then also special assignments, and this goes both to staffing and vehicles, making sure we have those vehicles for those positions, but also having those, those assignments and making sure they have the equipment that they need. If you look at this for the staffing plan, we talked about adding, you know, these officer positions. You had this detective position, which would really come in the form of an officer, but they would be, have this additional assignment. We also talked about additional canine, having that second canine for our community, as well as the addition of a lieutenant position to add to that supervisory structure that Chief Griffin is really looking for, for his department. Equipment-wise, and this is, you know, also relevant right now in our society. Police Department does an outstanding job, and we are so fortunate to have the police department and the officers that we have. But there's also a bright light shine on them, and their actions are so important in dealing with the situations that they have to deal in, deal with day in, day out. They need that equipment, not only for their protection, as far as the job goes, and going home safe every night, but also to have those body cams to really document the events that they deal with day in and day out. So body cameras will be a big discussion for tonight, as well as in the future. Tasers, they kind of go hand in hand in our particular situation. The one manufacturer that makes body cameras also makes tasers, and so there's some really nice advancements that, that have been placed out there, and a lot of our chief talk all about that. We also need the facilities. So the police department has a lot of needs. We talked about short-term, we talked about long-term. How do we do that? There's $800,000 that we've identified that can go into short-term, quote-unquote, improvements to our police station. How do you fund that along with all these other needs? And that was just our first meeting, a recap of that first meeting. Coming to streets. Our streets are not in the best shape, and Mr. Olson did a great job of talking about those different components. You'll hear about that more tonight. But we talked about stop-gap measures, you know, the repairing of the pothole, sidewalk, striping. We looked at rehabilitation of our streets and then how to do that. You know, do you, do you borrow? Do you take out a loan? Do you try to save up money now? You know, and just some of those different aspects when it comes to streets. What we heard from the committee during our street conversation, they used some of the slides from the actual presentation, but what we heard is there, there's a, a desire to do the best for streets and try to keep those streets up so we can maximize the value that we already have in them, but there's also a desire to do a large project quickly. And so we were throwing out numbers of, you know, how do we do that? How do we get to the economy of scales of a $500,000 project so that, one, the community that voted for this tax budget actually sees it goes to work right off the bat and has an impactful project. So we'll talk more about that at this meeting as well. Fire Department, a lot of this measure has started with the fire department, and it started with having a sustainable fire department, one that our past chief had talked a lot about. But unfortunately, is not, had to have a major medical emergency because of some of the staffing plan, because of some of the call volume. He could not see that come to fruition, but it is the master plan that dictates exactly how we get that done. We get it done by addressing some of those critical needs, and that's adding staffing, volunteer support, apparatus replacement plan, and having really a sustainable fire department, not only now, but into the future. So we looked at the Measure S pieces of that. We looked at some of the one-time needs that, that the fire department has identified. And then we also looked at future staffing. This one is a little bit different because it also takes the district to come on board. This master plan does not work without both parent agencies. So how do we step into that into the future? And so you'll see that where this year's budget will have certain recommendations, or at least there's a plan for that, and then looking towards those out years to possibly fully implement this master plan. Then we looked at the pool, lastly, and the needs of the pool and the fact that public swimming pools are that amenity to the public, and they're not sustainable. It's not a, it's not necessarily a private business that you're going to want to go into to make money. Community public swimming pools typically lose about two-thirds or so, or needs to, I shouldn't say lose, they need to be subsidized by about two-thirds. And that's what you see with our pool here, almost just under 60% of a subsidy, and that subsidy goes towards the amenity and the services that that pool offers. That pool offers our community swimming lessons for our children. It offers physical therapy for us as adults, especially as, as we age. It offers physical fitness opportunities, and there's also, there are some economic development opportunities, too, with recreational programs and swim meets and different things like that, that it can bring into our community. But the pool itself, and what Measure S really was stated for the pool, was to bring that, that funding source that would make this pool more sustainable. So maybe it doesn't get talked about in every budget and doesn't get pitted against the police or, or the fire, but it actually is a sustainable amenity with additional revenues coming in to support it. So with that, we talked about the Measure S, what it goes to for the pool. Some of the expenses that the pool has faced in the recent years, the pool has a lot of minimum wage employees. Lifeguarding is a great job for our youth, for, for, for other people that are dedicated to the aquatics, and those jobs get paid minimum wage. Minimum wage has gone up a dollar per year for, for the last five years. That equates, then, this next year, January 2022, when it gets fully implemented, that'll be an increase of $72,000 per year to the pool. So additional revenue is very important to keep this pool sustainable. So looking forward, we have the recreation department. We'll continue to implement those key things that are identified in the master plan. That's the, you know, looking at the fees, looking at additional grants, continuing to assess the program and upgrading the facility. So that's what we're going to do on the, on the general fund side of things and kind of just the programming of it. And then for the Measure S piece, what we're looking at, again, just sort of getting that 25% of Measure S, at least considering that, and really impacting that overall deficit that the pool has to make it more sustainable. Okay, so that's kind of a recap of where we were. A lot of those things you'll see as we work our way, and like I said, we have a great, great spreadsheet, and Linda does excellent job on her spreadsheets. This one is one of her, one of her best, in my opinion, and as an engineer, I just absolutely love it. So if I go too far into loving the spreadsheet, just let me know, and we can kind of back out a little bit. But it truly is a, it's a, it's a nice tool that we'll be able to use tonight. There were a couple of follow-up items, so that the, the committee wanted to know more about, and part of it was in the police department, and he bought body cameras and tasers, and then the next was discussing a little bit more of the streets piece of it and what exactly that project kind of looks like in our first couple of years as we move our way through it. So body cameras. So it's all about the equipment. You said I have a couple of pictures here, body cameras and tasers, and comparing the options. And with this, I'd like our chief of police to, to go ahead and turn on his video if he, if he can, and I'll stop sharing for a minute. Rich, do you want to talk just in, in general? Body cameras, give us your thoughts on the importance of body cameras and some of the, the benefits, pros and cons?
Good evening, council, committee. Thank you. Benefits and the importance of it, I think the best way to put it is, I myself, I feel naked if I go out anymore about it. We're way past the day and age of not being able to record what we do, you know, be able to present that transparency-wise. So the importance of a body camera footage, look at Columbus and what happened to put that out there, and even then, when something seems as clear-cut, it's not. So it's still open for that. The more importance of that is, is having it there and the reliability of what the equipment you have. To me, that's the really big importance on it. The equipment's not going to break off and go flying, you know? The current body cameras we have, I've had that personally when I was officer. It went flying, one of the first fights I got into, and it was 15 feet away from me upside down on the pavement. We've had a couple incidents recently, even today. I don't know if everybody saw the post today about the incident our officers were involved in. Even that incident, the body camera started falling off, and Sergeant Wilson had to replace it for Officer Sanders in that incident. Equipment-wise, that also, oh, sorry, Mr. Weir. You're on mute, sir.
I was just going to say, Rich, looking at these, these photos, this is, is this the current cameras that we have? Is this the watch guard system?
Yes, and if you look at that system, the backside of that is actually kind of a pin, per se, that goes through the uniform and attaches the mounting system on that. They either use that mounting system, or there's a clip that just simply kind of, you kind of shove it on your uniform, and it just applies a little bit of pressure and stays on. The other system, the Axon system, if you want me to talk about it now, Mr. Weir?
That'd be great, yeah.
I've lived and breathed it with that system. I worked for the sheriff's office. I was, I believe I was actually the first officer in the county to wear a body camera when I was working on the task force. That system with the Axon, I've confirmed with them, it, it'll come with the same magnets, which I would be hard-pressed to pull those magnets apart most times, unless you have something in between them, like a little thin piece of fabric. They are very well-mounted. I've been in a lot of fights with them on, been in a lot of life-death situations with them, and it stayed on, and it got good video footage. So to me, there's no comparison at all. We just had to order five new mounts for our current watch guard cameras. If that tells you how many times they break, and they're just not reliable, per se. In, in talking about a little more, also, you have to talk about battery life. The current cameras that we're using aren't lasting near a full shift. They weren't designed for that. We work 12-hour shifts. Some, most departments work either in eight or 10, the most. That's more what those were designed for. So we're having to come back in and charge those a lot, so we're missing a lot of footage on things, and the batteries over time are just, they're not maintaining the charge. The Axon cameras, they're going to last the full shift. That's what they're made for, and the ease of charge is a lot simpler also.
So the chief and I worked on a, on a brief spreadsheet to try to provide a matrix of the pros and cons of, of each of the different cameras. So he went out and he got three different quotes, and so he had the Axon, Axon quote here, and they have three different options with the Axon. You have the Motorola or the WatchGuard, which you saw the picture of, and then there's another brand, the digital Ally brand, Ally brand, and that's, that was also included. So Rich, do you want to, do you want to talk a little bit about each of these? So we hit the, the, you know, contract term is, is another piece. I'd like to talk on that one real quick. So the Axon is a five-year quote, and what they do with these is they'll give us new cameras in the first year, they'll replace them again in the third year, and then they'll replace them again in the fifth year. These other ones, Motorola, I think does the first year rich, and then replacing again in year three. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. I think it's the, you have what that is, and then once the contract's up.
So it's just, just the first year, and is that the same with, with digital?
That was my understanding of it. Yes, I, I can review them again, but that was my understanding of those contracts.
Okay, and then you have the proven secure mounting system?
Yeah, that's the biggest one. I mean, that's a huge one for me. I can't tell you how many times they've broken. We booked it into evidence. The, we had an incident a few, maybe a week or two ago, where our officer was assaulted, tried to take his handgun, the other officer's handgun. During that, the body camera mount broke and went flying off. So luckily, the other officer had a body camera also, so we were able to get some footage of it. But it's just, again, if we didn't, then I don't like trusting stuff that's not proven on that either. So when it comes to the digital ally, I don't know a lot about them. They do have a magnet that's almost similar, but not quite as much. They're just, I don't know that they're new to the market. I just don't know anything about them. I know and have been through stuff with Axon again, so.
The battery life, chief?
Battery life is, is no doubt that goes to Axon as far as what they do. They'll, they'll last the full shift without recharging. The Motorola won't. Digital Ally is the same thing. It's an eight to 10 hours. They do have batteries, as far as you can, they're rechargeable. You can take them out and actually put them in very simply, so you could be having extra batteries charging, come back to the office and plug them in, plug them out. Really, the ease of use for charging also kind of has to be noted. It goes into a few other things. The Axon cameras, the officer walks in the back door, takes the camera off, puts it on the mounting or the, the deck, and it downloads from the camera, uploads to the cloud, charges and updates all in one. It's fire and forget on that. Also on that, if the officer has a call, say, two minutes later, and it's about 25% downloaded, runs out, grabs it, and puts it back on. When he comes back in, the Axon cameras, they remember where that download stopped, so it'll restart from there. Whereas compared to the other, for current one, you can't do that. It starts all the way over again. It won't complete a download, and in some cases, we've lost the footage on that. Way, it's way simpler to use, and just in that time alone, you're getting, saving a lot of time for the officers, sitting down at an extra computer, you know, logging into the system, getting their camera up, downloading it, managing the evidence that way. If they have to make copies of the evidence, they have to go back into that system. Typically, it's Christina taking away from her at the front desk. And I mean, really, she has so much to do anyways, and it's, so we're saving her a lot of time in doing this. Right now, with Axon, the officers wouldn't even have to make copies or anything. The, the district attorney would have direct evidence or direct access to that, so they can be over in their office, log in. If they need, you know, evidence for a court case, they can review it right there. All our officers have to do is tag the videos with their case numbers, and that's all solved. So that solves a lot of the transparency issues and Brady issues as far as producing evidence for the district attorney.
Rich, you want to speak to some of these other pieces, like the, you know, the, you have the unlimited storage, you have the live monitoring?
It's currently our Motorola, the unlimited storage that includes Fritz going over every now and then. He has to actually make copies of the hard drives, and we store those here. So it's not unlimited. It's, it's limited to how big a hard drive we get. We have to keep buying those, maintaining those. Digital Ally only has a 90-day retention on their evidence, so every 90 days, we basically doing the same thing we're doing now, as far as that, or we'd have to buy and upgrade the evidence storage. The cloud system that's on Axon, for when I use that, it's, you download there, you can access it from any computer secure, and it's integrated with our statute of limitations for the cases. So you mark the case with your case number. You mark it if it's a violent crime, sex assault, misdemeanor, infraction, it's just informational, and then automatically that, that information purges through our policy for that. So I, and it maintains it for as long as you need it. It doesn't go away. If you mark it, you know, permit, it'll still be there. Somebody had a question?
I do. Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Hey, chief, on that, well, you took, I need that screen back, Eric. I was gonna, sorry. Would you, would you, on that seven, the, the virtual reality trainer on the seven plus premium, would you guys use that? I mean, is that a function you guys would use?
I'm very glad you asked that because I was really sold on it today when I was watching the video of what happened today. Our body camera footage today was played out like a post-training video for officers, and without a doubt, I think that's one of the most important pieces now. I'm totally convinced. With what we're seeing out there on the streets, it's, I think the last count was about 80% increase in mental health issues with what's going on in society and what's being requested from our officers daily, the amount of training that we can get from something like that. That's an in-house thing that's wireless. You can take it down to the culture center and train there. They can train right here in this back room. It, I think almost daily that would probably be used. If not, we could use it weekly here. Yes, I, I will be a very big advocate for that and asking for that, because I, I think that's just, that's not the future. That's the now that's going to be required, and we'd be seeking that elsewhere anyways. And they are really big on that from Axon. I've talked to them a long, long periods of time about that, and the amount of time they're putting into development for that and maintaining it, and I think it'd be an excellent upgrade for the officers.
And would that help your new hires?
Oh, without a doubt, it'd help anybody. That'll help me in dealing with it. These are, this, they have three different levels in there, beginning, intermediate, advanced, so you can progress through it, and you can go back and retake stuff. They have new stuff every single day that's put in there. You can walk through it. So yeah, it's not just new hires. That's everybody that's going to help out.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. Mr. Long, sorry.
Oh, sure. Quickly remind me which system we have right now?
We have the watch guard system, which is owned now by Motorola.
Okay, and so the watch guard and the digital ally have none of these features that the Axon does, except for those one or two?
It has a, there's a couple that are there, but overall, no, they don't really. The biggest thing that they don't have is they don't provide the tasers. We would be looking at new tasers anyways here, and I, I think we have another year on the contract. I can talk a little bit to that of why I think that's an excellent issue to address also, but in answering your questions, they don't match up quite a way, no. And you're really looking, you're really looking at something that I, if I had my druthers to purchase something, I would purchase Axon for myself to go out there. So if it's something I want for my officers, I want what I, I'd want for myself, and it's Axon without a doubt. I mean, it's the So if it's something I want for my officers, I want what I, I'd want for myself. Um, and it's Axon without a doubt. I mean, it's the standard out there.
Okay.
And chief, just to sort of answer that, I mean, a lot of it's ease of use, right? So seamless evidence system, seamless downloading, right? And that's, that's easy to use. You sort of talked about it. The, the live monitoring piece, if you want to touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, of course. So the live monitoring piece kind of goes in with the other things too, that activation with gun deployment, activation with taser deployments. Um, say our officers are unfortunately walking down through beachfront park and they get ambushed. Somebody shoot, it's one of our officers. Automatically I get a live alert on the screen. I could be sitting here at my desk. Um, or I can even play it like today in the situation with the subject that had, you know, a razor blade stuff. As soon as that taser is activated, their bodies camera activated, it pops up on my screen. I have a live feed. I can now go back thirty seconds, have video footage. Uh, get it out there, get what I need. Um, if you have a planned event, um, you can, I could be watching, you know, if we go hit somebody with a high risk warrant, I can be watching in, in incident command basically here. Um, if there's an ambush situation, the officer doesn't have to activate anything. If there's a gunshot around them, it activates itself, pops up alert, hey, this happened. Um, it's really, really good, uh, system for that. So.
And then same, like you said, the, the automatic activation for gun deployment, the body camera within a, within a radius for officers around. And then also the automatic activation for the body camera if your taser's gone.
Right. So i- in like, in a situation where officers have to get out of the car right away and address the threat. Um, sometimes you forget, it's not in the movie because you don't have time. You're grabbing for a gun or grabbing for your taser. You don't remember to turn on your body camera. No matter training we do, sometimes it's, stuff happens. Um,
Yeah.
In that instance, if somebody else activates a camera around you within a certain radius, I want to say it was twenty or thirty feet. I can't remember. Um, please don't comment on that one, but it will activate all the other officers' cameras within that radius. Um, that doesn't include just our department. There's other departments using the body cameras that'll do the same. So, um,
So the only difference between the core seven and the seven premium is the facial redaction software and the, uh, virtual reality trainer?
It loses some of the officer's safety software. The core redaction soft or the facial redaction software. If we went with the seven plus, it's about twenty thousand dollars to put that back on there for their facial redaction. And if we have an incident, um, say like a Columbus incident, you're probably going to be paying somebody about that much to go back through your video footage. Um, and do that when this could be done by either Christine or myself. So, um, just to put that a little perspective. But there's a little bit, um, that goes into as far as, there's a few things. It also, the premium, that comes with, uh, unlimited evidence storage for other items too. If we collect Ring video footage, uh, photographs, anything like that, we can upload all that to the same case and maintain it in the same digital file. It also gives different access to, uh, certain things for citizens to, um, log in and put stuff in there for us. That thing, if, if they have certain footage or cell phone footage or anything like that.
Nice. Thank you.
I do have another question. I don't, sorry to the rest of the council if I'm hogging all the questions. But it's the one that, that the watchdog has, and that's the in-car camera. Can you explain a little bit about that, chief? Uh, i- is it, uh, because I'm, when I read that, I'm thinking, so the camera switches from the car to your body cam?
No. So that actually, and I learned today that, uh, the price for the t- the Axon also, it is available through them. Um, no, that's an actual in-car camera that's, uh, in the car itself. Doesn't matter which officer drives it or anything. Um, so it gives that first perspective of pulling over a vehicle, um, that you're not going to get from your body camera that's on your chest.
Okay.
That's a separate system that needs to be maintained.
But it's included in that prize. Sorry, Mr. Long.
No, I was just gonna say, and we have that now, right?
We do not have in-car cameras actually, no. I can, yeah. In current, some current things we're dealing with, it would be very helpful if we did have that though.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, with Axon, that came in, actually I got the price today. We can get that. I think it was a hundred and twenty-nine dollars, um, per car per month for that. Um, and that costs down there five times what we'd be looking at. That'd be my suggestion is we're gonna have about five vehicles. They're gonna be rotated around for patrol. I don't think that every single car we have out there, if we have a detective car, needs it. Your main meat and potatoes, it's gonna be doing most of the traffic stops. It's gonna be patrol vehicles. And the bang for your buck for that, for that price, um, less than eight thousand dollars a year. If we were to go with the Axon, which is definitely my recommendation, those cameras would then work on the same system, same evidence upload, everything. Um, it would actually be done. Uh, and talking with Fritz, we can put a wifi signal back here that's secure, or it can be, um, uploaded, encrypted through, um, LTE. It serviced through cell phone stuff.
Okay. Looks like council member Altman had a question.
Okay, so, um, I'm just giving you guys food for thought. Okay, so it's, um, so considering, sorry, considering, so hi- our local highway patrol has dash cams. But they don't have body cams and some of the officers pay for them themselves. Um, you know, for their own, you know, protection, but they don't sync with the car cams. So it's a separate deal. It doesn't sync up with the main system. And, um, I, I think that we should have dash cams for sure. And I, you know, I'm, uh, um, I'm all for like the core seven plus body cams, but that's just me. I want everyone to consider everything, but, um, you know, there's been many times where I've seen where, um, there'll be highway patrol, our city police, the sheriff, there'll be, um, even the, uh, what is it? The ranger. Everyone responds together and works together and stuff. I think someone should have some body cams that sync with the car and the main systems. Just makes sense to me. Um, that's all I have to say. I didn't really have a question or anything. Sorry.
You know, the, the other piece that we really haven't talked about is this taser piece. Uh, so you know, the, the taser piece is a big component of, of this proposal that we received. Uh, you can see that it's not included in these other ones. These are simply just body cameras and the Motorola does have the, have the dash cam. They don't have the tasers. We have a current taser contract, uh, and the, the taser contract that we have costs us six thousand dollars a year. In this price that you see here, that includes a new taser contract. So this will be five years, with the tasers that are integrated like council member Altman was just saying, with the same body cameras and it all sort of works together, same dash cameras. So when you look at this, you can really take six thousand dollars off because it is, it is, or would include the current tasers that we already have. Uh, the dash cams, they're about fifteen hundred and fifty dollars, something like that per car. If you look on an annual basis, so, you take that times five, you get to the seventeen fifty. Motorola does offer that. It's twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty for the dash cam piece of it. I think, uh, chief and I were both, uh, very excited when we saw this price. We were expecting a much higher price on the dash cams. So that's kind of what goes, what goes on there. So this price doesn't include, uh, tasers. But we already budget for that. So that's, you wouldn't have to add an additional. It's already in our budget. So I've taken it away from this one. It's how I've tried to, to make it apples to apples.
So what would the price on the seven plus premium, that take away the six thousand dollars, you say?
Yeah, it, it already does. So this formula.
Thirty-seven, or, sorry, forty-seven.
Okay.
So Eric, I have a couple of quick questions. Uh, if, if we're in a current taser contract, do we get relief from that if we move forward with this?
Yes, yes.
And then the second question that I have is that this is obviously, um, a slam dunk as far as safety and liability goes for the city. So is there a benefit to the insurance?
Uh, I mean, there would be. I can't guarantee that our premiums are gonna go down, but if you implement something like this, they do have what's called an RMAT program. You know, if we had this, this would make for, and you, you'll apply for, but you know, that, they can give us back to, up to ten percent back. And so that can equate to up to fifty thousand dollars back. Doing something like this would create a very strong application for, getting some of that money back. Uh, and then just, you know, the flip side of it is just the liability to the city, you know, i- itself. And you know, if we did have a case and we're found, you know, liable maybe because we don't have the right equipment, right? Our premiums are gonna go up at that point. So.
If I can add to that, Mr. Weir, just a little bit as far as the training of it, that being a big advocate for that, for that premium one. The cost that would be for us to send people out to get that amount of training, everything that's involved in that, de-escalation, uh, everything empathy training that's in that and that's continually going to be updated by them. Uh, remember, we're having to send people at minimum to Eureka, if not further down south every time. And to get that, uh, that seems like a law as far as the, the cost of it. But we're able to use that at any time, let alone the quarterly trainings that we're gonna be doing. Um, because if we're looking at like firearms training and everything, I don't know when the next time we're gonna be able to get ammunition is, let alone the price that it's gonna be. Um, there's current legislation that may bring a hundred percent tax on it type stuff. This is type of training that we could, I could schedule my officers right now. I have a coverage shift on. So we have two officers working patrol. Hey, you know what? For the next hour, you're gonna sit, you're gonna be over here doing this de-escalation training on the VR headset type thing. Um, so, and I think that would be tenfold coming back to us as far as liability protection. Um, our training program showed it today and the way that the two officers handled themselves and the way that they responded, um, making extremely quick decisions. Um, and handle themselves. So to have that ongoing, to me, that's just, I think that's gonna help out our city attorney in the long run. I mean, Mr. Weir, if something were to happen later on also.
And, and chief, this quote is for fifteen officers. So this would handle the, the full staffing plan. Uh, with the three additional officers that we're talking about, uh, tonight.
Yeah, the, the taser pro- uh, the taser contract we have right now, that doesn't give one taser for each officer. This is a, this pricing plan really is per officer that it comes out for the bundle. They gave us a lot of discounts for this program, uh, because the premium program normally costs a lot more. It's, but you have to have a minimum of like twenty officers on your department for them to really start talking about it. So they did and did put a lot of, um, discounts for us in that. It's gonna go up. Uh, also they talked about probably, uh, I said, I think it's about two hundred and thirty something bucks per officer that it equates out to. They're expecting to go up about thirty or forty bucks per officer next year and then coming on. So.
But we would be locked in for the five-year term.
Yes, and that comes, that any, if they upgrade their tasers in that time too, they're not expecting to pass the seven. Uh, we would get that new upgrade, but the body cameras, you're at minimum gonna get those upgrades, you know, once, to start with, halfway through the contract, then five years. So, that's.
Chi- chief, would we be the, when you said that the SO has these, but do they have the, the seven plus premium? And are they as up to date as what you've described?
Uh, they have the body camera threes, but I don't thi- I don't believe they want the premium as far as the technology and stuff like that.
So we would be the only law enforcement agency in Delmar County to have these?
Too many, yes.
You know, a couple of other real action areas that we've dealt with over the past, you know, and it's, it seems like where there's a new, uh, example of where these would be beneficial almost, almost every day. But a couple of weeks ago, our officers were involved in a, in a scuffle near Crestonalk with, uh, you know, uh, a person that's been charged, I, I believe with attempted murder. Is that correct, uh, chief?
Uh, that charge didn't, wasn't gone forward with, but as a felony assault on peace officer, tried to disarm one of the peace officers. There's several that are going forward. Yes.
They tried to use the, our current tasers and the current tasers, you know, were infected. Do you want to speak a little bit more to that, chief?
So the technology on the new tasers, uh, really did upgrade it. Um, it starts with the darts basically. Um, currently the tasers, as the darts come out, they're kind of unstable a little bit in the air. They're not meant to fly a long distance. And so when they penetrate, um, like happened today, the subject actually turned a little bit, had some loose clothing. So one dart actually got into the skin. The other dart was kind of loose in his jacket, or I think it was a sweatshirt. But there was still some contact made, but more like on top of the skin. The darts have to make, i- it connects that electrical pulse through, um, those darts and you know, a little bit more spread, you can get the better locks of the muscles. That's what it's designed to do. But it doesn't work if it doesn't get into the muscle basically. So in that incident where the, uh, the, so we tried to disarm the officer, uh, he had really loose clothing and they deployed the taser and there was no effect. And so we're back to hands-on with the subject, um, who actually just dropped the knife in the foot pursuit types and everything. So, um, unfortunately for that subject, one of our officers was just through the defense attack his course as an instructor. So didn't work out too well. Uh, worked out great for us, uh, but it could have been even better if we had these upgraded tasers. The new tasers, um, the cords that actually produce the electrical impulse are inside the dart itself. It's a heavier weighted dart that actually has twice the impact. So it does get into, uh, it go through loose clothing and it stabilizes in flight better. Uh, they have two different cartridges also. One's meant for more of a close quarters situation. The other one is more of a long distance because, I think it was like eight, over eighty somewhat percent, almost ninety percent or of our contacts are within that certain distance that tasers are deployed. So they upgraded as far as the way the darts came out and everything for those specifically. Um, but definitely even today, I, I believe we had that new upgrade taser would have had a way better effect as well. Um, so that's kind of where that goes.
So the chief and I have talked about this a lot. Uh, his recommendation and obviously supportive of myself would be to go with the, the seven plus premium. So when we, you know, when, when the councils and the major escalators considering, uh, some of these things or when you first see the, you know, the overall cost of the, of the spreadsheet, you will see, uh, you'll see this number, uh, as the, the, the first recommendation. We could step back, go into some of these other numbers and you'll see how easy that is in the spreadsheet as we're starting to, uh, to evaluate a lot of the, the different options.
If I could add to that real quick, the importance of this to me, you can put on hold the upgrades to the building if this gets to my officers. That's how important these are. Um, we're making do with the building. Yes, it'd be great for upgrades and it's needed. This is something that'll save their lives and it'll save the city and liability, everything. Um, it's the training, everything. It's also a recruiting tool. When we have equipment like this, um, to bring people in, you know, that may not be, that may be coming from the Bay area or anything, or worried a little bit about pay, whatever. Hey, we have the best tools on the market. Come work with us. Um, so you do look at it overall and that's how passionate I feel about it. Um, i- it's just a really important system. I can't say enough about the seamlessness of the evidence and how you can view it, how much work it's gonna take off Christina. Uh, and our officers should be back out on the road more often too with this, did downloads and it's, it's gonna save them a lot of time. So, I just wanted to express that, um, as far as my recommendations. And if we have to wait on some of the improvements later on for that stuff, that's, that's kind of where my opinion is.
I, I have one quick question, chief. Thank you for the presentation. I think this is a great pro- platform and, uh, I do support it. But how much does it cost to replace the cartridges, um, after use?
That's actually included in this, in the program. Those are free replacements. Um, I can't remember how many, but it's per officer, per year. Um, like our current one, we just got a free, fresh upgrade of thirty-six cartridges for the current tasers. They do so many on average per officer, per year. So that's included. Um, I don't expect us to exceed using that, um, that amount of cartridges a year.
Excellent.
Um, the batteries also are rechargeable on this one and we don't have to pay for anymore. As far as the Axon one, um, you get to a certain extent on the digital ally and you're gonna have to buy extra ones for that also. Um, on the Motorola, they've been included as far as, um, the warranty as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's not any more questions on, on that piece of it. And we can always come back to this as well. I mean, like I said, there's, there's, there's a lot of different areas that we have talked about over the, over our last four meetings. And this happened to be one that I know that the, uh, committee had expressed interest in. So that's where I wanted to take a little bit of a deeper dive on that particular one. And you will see that cost, uh, included in our, in our overall spreadsheet. The other area that we had, uh, discussed, and I'll share my screen again, was in regard to streets. And the, the basic, uh, recommendation from the committee was, I'd like to see something that's substantial, something that's visible, something that's impactful, uh, to our community. Our community's waited a long time for streets. So why don't we get a, a larger project out there that's early enough that they can see that this, their measure ask money is making a difference. Uh, and so with that, I'll, I will turn it over to Director Olson. Uh, and if you could turn on his, uh, video, that would be wonderful. And he can talk to just, just briefly about some of the, you know, thought process. And then what he's thinking as far as a, uh, early project and then as we go forward through the five years.
All right. Good evening, council and committee. Uh, here to talk about some, uh, potential project selections. Um, so go ahead. Next slide. Uh, this is just a reminder of kind of the, uh, life cycle. Um, you know, we want to prioritize and execute our projects within budget. Um, and do it inside this framework of, uh, prioritizing and selecting the right project, developing plans, taking these projects out to bid and get a, a regular cycle going. Uh, in order for us to be successful, we really need to follow the cycle. And also be projecting out not just for this one year spend or two years, uh, but for, you know, four or five years. So, go ahead. So really what we're looking at is recommendation for kind of this year one, two. Speaking to, uh, prioritizing the most used and the most, uh, the roads that are in good condition. Trying to ensure that we're protecting, uh, our roads using that best first approach. Uh, we've, we've gone through. Uh, we've, we've gone through, looked at our, uh, Pazer data, which is that pavement rating schedule. Ran through, uh, did some just visual back checking of, you know, does that twenty seventeen data still apply today? And yes, it does generally apply and then began, uh, thinking what, what really is a good project now that we have some type of budget uh, in mind. Um, and so really for this year one, two, I'm thinking that we could, uh, develop a project that would, uh, uh, we could focus on just digouts and patching and doing some crack sealing, which are great preservation methods. Um, what it does require is outsourcing of some plans. We need a little bit of engineering help just to help us get, get a plan set together. Get us on track so that we could be out to bid sometime this winter and then doing construction, uh, summer, summer of next year. And that would probably span, you know, two fiscal years, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, really this will be a great start to kick us off into that five-year planning horizon and, um, to help us plan for those longer-term budget items. So.
And so Director Olson, you're thinking a- at this point, given a project like that with some crack ceiling, some digouts. It's not exactly defined, so it's hard to say exactly how much we'd be able to do, but if you figure a budget of maybe ten to twelve thousand dollars per block on some of our better streets to try to do that best first, you might be able to touch forty blocks, fifty blocks with this first, uh, first project. If we can allocate that five hundred thousand dollar, uh, figure.
Yep, and that's why, that's why we have this economy of scale there. We had talked about that previously, but really uh, being able to take a big enough project where we can get good value on a crack seal, uh, and dig out kind of projects. Uh, the, the other thing that we want to do, um, and this is really, uh, positioning us well for that, uh, years three and four is we want to have some shovel-ready projects so that as we're going into grant cycles, that we have something on the shelf that we can say, hey, grant agency, look at, look at us, we're ready to go on some of these projects. Um, looking at, looking at the budget base, it looks like years three and four. Um, instead of doing a more maintenance-intensive project, perhaps prioritizing one of our collector's streets that has degraded uh, to such an extent that, you know, maybe we can just replace a couple of blocks. So again, same size of project, but different approach. Um, we would certainly want to target a street that is of great importance, uh, but that is in maybe on the poor end of the condition. Uh, I could see us potentially being out to bid, uh, or, you know, designing through the winter of twenty-twenty-three and then construct, constructing in that fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five kind of year. Really, this is, what this is doing is setting us up in a capital improvement plan, uh, which is pretty standard type of procedure, but we get into the cyclical cycle where we're planning, we're implementing, we're continuing to, continuing to evaluate. So really just get us out there that five years and then each year we need to be looking at our five-year plan. Uh, help, help keep us on track. All right, next one. So recommendations, um, obviously there's always a, a baseline pieces.
Looks like Mr. Olson's having some technical difficulties.
Yep. Well, we'll start with the minor repairs, street striping, sidewalk repairs, so that we have some basic uh, increases into our regular basic maintenance. In addition to that, we want to really target that four to five hundred thousand dollar project um, through life extending maintenance and the project areas that we really want to consider and, um, that I don't have a plan fully developed today, but our third street, fifth, ninth, Harding and H. And I feel like we can tackle a big portion of that with those life extending maintenance, uh, elements. And then in the out years, year three and four, uh, I think we're probably somewhere in that, you know, another four to five hundred thousand dollar project. I'd really like to target A Street, uh, the first couple of blocks from Pacific moving south. So it's been identified in our, in our Pazer data here as a, in poor condition and that's why I said we can do a couple of blocks of A Street in a couple of years for that, you know, four hundred thousand dollar amount.
So John, you're thinking the first year, focus on some more collector's streets, the streets that people drive most often. Make sure that one, we get them up to a condition, there'll be some digouts, some of those major potholes. But also do some cracks, you know, because some of them are in fairly good shape right now. So let's make sure we keep them there. And then we can, uh, and so we can keep those called major collector's streets. So that would be like this street, that would be ninth, like you said, H. Uh, some of those, uh, areas and the, as well as getting some key digouts, uh, throughout the city, where we could bring those streets up as well.
Yeah, both ninth, ninth, Harding and H, uh, a year and a half ago, we did, you know, about I think forty thousand dollars with the crack ceiling and we were able to get a pretty significant section of those um, of those streets done, but we weren't able to complete them. I think with the additional, additional funds that we're looking at in this first year, we can really tackle it. Really preserve those streets and keep the water out of them, uh, for years to come. Um, yeah, in addition, uh, I just wanted to touch on this, the shovel-ready project idea, year one design work. Really, we have a, we have F Street, which we feel is going to be funded through a grant. Uh, we need to tune up the plans a little bit, make some modifications and get that, uh, portion bid ready. Also, we have K Street between front and second, which is in need, desperate need of repair. Uh, we'd really like to take, uh, some of our SB one funds and dedicate it to K Street and have that as a shovel-ready project also. Uh, the remaining portions of front street from G up through L, we, we really, the, the big red line. We, we'd like to get that shovel ready so that, uh, it'll help improve our chances of getting additional grants. While we have a good set of plans for front street, uh, it needs a little bit of modification to perhaps better fit, uh, potential available budgets. And then also I have one other street, oh, the A Street piece. So just ge- getting that project ready. Um, so that we will be in a position to bid it soon.
And John, you mentioned it, but just so everybody's aware, when, when you look at the spreadsheet, we'll have a section for SB one funds, which are not measure S funds. Uh, SB one funds need to identify a key project. So they're not, it's not a great funding source for this large project that covers a, a vast area. They want to see a specific project. What it is good for is identifying something like K Street or like front street and saying, we're going to spend this on the design. We've actually used a lot of SB one funds, about a hundred thousand of it, if I remember correctly, to get the portion of front street that's done. To get that design done ahead of that CDPG project that funded it. I think this is going to be a really important strategy as we move forward, especially given the current administration and some of their uh, efforts to try to push it, the infrastructure plans that are out there. There's possibly trillions of dollars that could be coming down the line in infrastructure projects. And just like what we heard from Measure S Committee, and I think it was Committee Member Perry that really drove it home. And we need to be in a, in a position to where we can say we are ready, because they're going to want, just like what we wanted to do in this first year Measure S. They're going to want to put that money out there and they're going to want to see something done with. A rural community like us that's disadvantaged, if we have shovel pred, shovel-ready projects, if we put ourselves in that condition, we should be really competitive in going after some of those funds. So we might not have to go out and do a debt service or borrow money for, for that, because we, there, there's grants that could be coming down the line in the next couple of years. So that's, that's kind of in a nutshell, the streets and we'll hit it a little bit more as we, as we jump into the, into our five-year plan as we're trying to put this all together. But really as Director Olson and I were talking about it, kind of the, you know, the best, best first, best streets first type of approach. So preservation. And then in the next years, we save up a little bit of money, reach back and try to pull one of our, our streets that aren't so uh, aren't in such good condition, pull them up. So now they're best streets. And then the next project after that, right, we do another preservation project. So we might see like a big slurry seal project or something like that. And then reach back. So kind of the cyclical sort of planning based on, on some of the grant opportunities and what we're able to do.
And if tax revenues are way up, we'll tackle streets every year.
I had a couple of questions, John.
Yeah.
Um, so first of all, I, I like the thought process. Um, uh, when you mentioned the key digouts or how you called it digouts in the city. Um, can you tell me a little more about that?
Sure, bit, basically there's, there's spots based on our visual observations that we ran where, uh, the street may appear on our map as, as green or yellow. But it may have an isolated spot that I would consider red. The, the Pazer system is not, is designed to evaluate roads while you're driving at twenty miles an hour and doing a visual observation. So it doesn't lend itself to a detailed analysis. And so when we do our walking tour, uh, just to, you know, hey, ground truth. What's going on? Is this condition true? And we found some potholes and in most cases, instead of, uh, instead of just having to do some surface treatment, it's really about digging it down, making sure you have a stable base underneath and building up a small portion. So we're not talking about grinding extensive pieces of a road, uh, but you do do spot repairs. And then you can patch it and then you can crack seal around the patch, keep the water out as well as doing the, the crack sealing, uh, of other parts of the road.
I was just thinking of, um, like, I think it's either seventh or eighth, but I think it's seventh. Where, I mean, your car, I mean, if you go twenty miles an hour, you're gonna, I mean, there's some really like big um, hill, like, you know, like.
Bumps.
Yes, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah.
Um, that are really dangerous.
Yeah, we, we do, we definitely have some, some spots. Uh, one of the strategies that I'm employing is making sure that we target those collectors first. So right off the bat, your, your, you know, H Street, uh, your ninth street, uh, the third. Uh, those, those are the ones that we'll target and prioritize because they have the highest volumes and are the most used and are still in reasonable condition. Some of the lesser streets, your sevens and eights, those are, those have to be pushed out into out years if we're going to utilize this data to help prioritize the most used in good condition roads or the most used in really poor condition roads where we're going to have to do some, you know, significant efforts. Uh, I certainly appreciate that, you know, as this map identifies, eighth street has some really rough spots, seventh, we've got some issues. So, uh, we appreciate that. The, the data, the way that we've prioritized, uh, uh, numerically as we assign a value of ten, uh, just as a starter to our collector's streets and a value of five to the non-collector streets. So that necessarily prioritizes the most used roads.
Okay, and then I know that you have a ninety thousand dollar annual budget for repairs, some striping, some sidewalks here and there. Um, are there any funds available for, um, Disability Act for access for, uh, some of our, um, sidewalks?
Like grant funds and things, there, there's, we're always looking out for grants. Uh, sometimes I'm not aware of them, but, um, yeah, I don't know of anything right offhand.
Just another liability issue, you know, for the city.
Yeah, we, we have used in past years, some of the RMAP fund, which was that, um, um, insurance reimbursement that Eric was talking about, uh, to do sidewalk grinding where we've had, you know, trip hazards and things and we're actively trying to reduce those. Um, and then also just those enhancements to, uh, sidewalks where we, where we need to, you know, where a tree is pushed up a sidewalk or something like that.
Uh, we will be able to, to be looking to combine some of these funds a- as well in the future. So, you know, the local transportation commission, they do have funding at times that maybe we can add to this, or at least we could approach them if we wanted to do some of these things. And then trying to prioritize those access ramps, you know, through a transition plan, trying to again identify, okay, what is used the most? What are those routes that, uh, that are really, uh, important to people and trying to hit those ramps first? Because you're absolutely right. It, it is a liability and, and the more we can address, the better. Uh, in, in regard to a digout, that's kind of a really good example, is the work that was recently completed on Fifth Street. So Fifth Street between the highways, I've noticed this past week, it was, it was closed between now and then. That's a good example of a, of a digout where the street itself wasn't that bad, but there was this twenty-foot section that, you know, was, was not very pleasant to drive on. And so going, getting that, sealing it up, those are the types of things you'll be able to see and we'll be able to do that, like I said, on about forty or fifty blocks throughout town.
Great, thank you.
Chair, sorry, Mitch Long brought up a good question with, with the, uh, handicap access. Are there any immediate needs for access for the handicap? Especially with us talking about a big front street project right now. We, we want everybody to be able to have a chance to be there. I, I mean, they, they should be able to get anywhere in our city.
Well, if you have events downtown, you know, there's a lot of sections of downtown that are not, um, you know, accessible for those with disabilities as well as, you know, your library area.
Yeah, those are, those are excellent points. We have, we have many areas that have no sidewalks, no curb ramps or curb ramps that are, uh, that are outdated or don't, don't meet current ADA standards. So there's, there's certainly areas, I mean, if, if you gave me ten million dollars tomorrow, I think we could spend it and, and uh, tackle a lot of those things. So this is certainly a much, a much more measured approach.
I, um, the reason I asked is I, I took my mom for our first walk today in the wheelchair and I'd never done that before. And I couldn't even go around an entire city block. Um, and so it just made me think, I'd never looked at it from that point of view before. So.
No, it is, it is a good point and there, you know, to, to answer your question, Councilor Smith, there, there are several areas, right, that, that need to be, uh, upgraded. And so it's going to be a matter of prioritizing. It's going to be this, this, this plan and this low methodical, you know, effort, the intentional effort that we're going to do. Ten, we're going to do fifteen, you know, th- those are the types of programs and then try to, try to look around schools to make sure your, you know, your schools are accessible. And then some of your other critical facilities and that there are routes to like the library and whatnot.
One of, one of the reasons I really like the, the proposed enhancements here is adding some additional funds just to our regular maintenance. So we can tackle, uh, some of the one-off miscellaneous curb ramps on corners, uh, you know, do some of the enhanced striping. Uh, tackle ju- just overall enhancing our basic maintenance, uh, and improvements, uh, out, outside of these large street projects.
Thank you.
And, and we'll come back to the streets discussion as we're working our, our way through. So, so don't be this is, that is your last shot at, uh, Mr. Olson in regard to, uh, to streets goes. We, we will be trying to put it all together. Okay, and there's not any other, uh, questions. We'll go ahead and we're, we're just about to the, uh, to the most exciting time, right? That's the, uh, the Linda spreadsheet time. And you guys are excited as I am about it. Uh, but things to consider as we work our way through it, like timing the personnel, the implementation that matters. Once you bring on a person, that cost is, is going to happen each and every year. So as you, as you look at those things, um, if you delay that hiring, it can create one-time savings to address some of the equipment needs, vehicle replacement facilities, different things like that. Uh, we talked a little bit about it, positioning ourselves for grants. That's also really important, especially right now. So we need to make sure we have a strategy for that. And then when we look at debt service, you know, that's an option as well. We touched on that a little bit, especially when it comes to buildings. Um, buildings have a built-in capital. We have talked to our municipal financial advisor, uh, a little bit about this. This would be something we'd have to vet out more if it is a recommendation from the committee, but, uh, it is an option that's out there. Okay, so putting it all together, the five-year plan. Let me get out of this and into this spreadsheet and open on my other screen. All right, I think this is the right one. Okay, so this is our tool for tonight. Uh, you have the basic summary of costs up here, which we'll dive into. There is a nice, uh, there's a nice graph here that looks at the different costs in the next five years by the various funds. And then we have everything that we have talked about in their various groups and we'll, uh, we'll jump into this. So can everybody see that all right? You want me to zoom in a little bit more? Is that better? Okay, so looking at this, this is, this is, so this is fire right off of that. We'll start with it. Fire is in orange. And these are the different things we talked about. So we talked about the three captain positions. We talked about stipend program for the volunteers, the sleeper program, uh, again for volunteers and, and kind of current things we can do with our, with our existing staffing. Increased training, looking at apparatus replacement fund, uh, the equipment replacements are just. Uh, the equipment replacements are just small things that the chief's recommending kind of in these uh in this first year and and going forward. Large diameter hose he talked about as a need in this first year while we sort of wait for the district. We have upgrades to the city station. Uh, volunteer recruitment consultant. This one's kind of morphed a little bit as we've gotten into the details. So it's, what this is probably going to look like is volunteer recruitment and retention training for our existing uh officers and employees. So this would be uh chief getting additional training, the battalion chiefs getting uh additional training on the different aspects of trying to run and facilitate a volunteer department. So it's not only recruitment to try to put it together, a really robust marketing effort, but it's also the additional training that goes along with keeping the volunteers there. And and so this is another, we didn't talk a lot about. So chief, do you want to give us just a view, a brief uh update on this item?
Yeah, so you know, doing, doing some, some digging. Sorry about the gravel in the voice. The pollen's getting me a little bit. Um, so doing a a little bit of digging, wanted to try and find rather than a consultant to come in and charge X number of dollars and say, okay, well, here's what you need, here's a program and here's how you need to do this. Started digging in the, in the place I ended up, ended up digging the deepest and working through was actually through the California State Firefighters Association. And CSFA, which all of our, all of our, our volunteers have a membership to CSFA. They are in our, as as things are are loosening up a little bit with COVID, they've got a series of workshops planned. They're two-day workshops directly for recruitment in recruitment and retention issues in the volunteer fire service. And they've got a couple of them in the North State. And what they, what they focus on is a combination of leadership challenges and management skills and training, uh, retention and recruitment incentives in order to bring people in and how to keep people and work with you on ideas on how to fund those. Identifying and communication of your volunteer needs, what, what, what's your volunteer needs? What are the the needs to help facilitate for those volunteers? And then the the biggest, one of the biggest pieces that I was interested in is actually they go through sessions on developing and implementing a local marketing plan. So it isn't a consultant coming in and saying, well, this is what you need to do for Crescent City. And this works somewhere else and we know what we do and and this is us. They actually work on being able to help you craft a program that works for your organization. And I talked with, with Human Resources Director Sunny Valero and would also like to incorporate her attendance at one of the North State conferences. And then to be able to, be able to have have funding there for the materials that you develop so that you can, you can run down, we can go downtown and we can have, have a professional looking program or material printed here in Crescent City that we can take to job fairs, we can take to the high school, we can take to the college. And and be able to work on ways to not only draw people in, but then to keep them long-term and make them a, as long as they're in the community, make them a a beneficial and an active volunteer. So, you know, it it started with the discussion headed toward a, a consultant, but the reality turns out, hey, we've got a good opportunity to get some of our members and Ms. Valero as well to the, these seminars coming up and and then bring it back and work on it in-house. Work on it collectively, the department, human resources, the city, the district, to build this campaign plan to bring people in at our own level.
Us, I definitely appreciate that, Chief, and I I think it it has been a good discussion and I think it will be beneficial to us. And I, you know, kind of, kind of brings us back to the, you know, to the overall thought of the fire department. This has always been all about the volunteers. How do we give the volunteers the support that they need? How do we give the chief the support that he needs? And as we talked about, it it's going to take uh a stepping through. And first, we need the district to get their funding that they need to implement the master plan. The district's currently out for an assessment. I believe at the, or at least at the end of this month, the uh the ballot uh for their benefit assessment will be out. And I think the date to turn in your ballot, chief, is June
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Ballots will leave the printer this, this coming Friday. They'll begin landing over the weekend to the start of next week for the forty-five day uh Prop two eighteen balloting process. I see a hand.
I just have a quick question. What are you going to do differently for outreach this time? Because you had a superstar team working on your Measure S committee. What are you going to do differently last time that people were confused about their ballots?
Well, one of the, one of the big pieces is a complete redesign of the entire ballot, the entire informational flyer that's required by law to go there. You know, the, the last ballot was very busy. And honestly, we heard from, from many people in the, within the fire district that said, oh, I got it. Looked like, looked like election season. I threw it in the trash. Because it it looked like an ad rather than an official ballot. Um, the district is actually working with the same company who prints the county's ballots. Um, the design is very, very simple, very straightforward. The, when, when it comes, the envelope will look like an official ballot mailer. They open the envelope and here is the official ballot and it says, bright red, official assessment ballot. It's got very well spelled out. It's got the instructions on the back. It's got a very straightforward informational uh flyer that has to be included with it. And it's got a return envelope and it spells it out very cleanly, very clearly. How to, how to cast your vote, how to participate, when your deadline is, where, where you send it. They're all going to the elections department. Um, the outreach side, the association, the firefighters association is very aggressive right now. Um, in fact, while we're in the meeting, I happened to see at the, the mail box, mail drop slot into Vanessa's office, somebody was out door-to-door this evening and dropped off the list that they had. Um, we're, the, the association's out on Facebook. Of course, the, the, the district is out on Facebook providing information, because the district can't campaign, but the association, there was a car wash on Friday, short notice. About a hundred vehicles passed across the facility to get washed and it was donations to help out with campaign funds um for advertising. So they're in the process of, uh, working with, with the radio. The triplicate's already got an ad that's going to fly this Friday. I mean, it it's boom, boom, boom. It's, things are busy. But, but, you know, being, being out there, um, which if, as we go along with this, uh, June fourteenth is the, the final date that will coincide with the, the fire district's uh regular meeting of the month. The elections department is geared right after that meeting within the next day uh to start the tally on the votes. Something that's going to help immensely is, there's no, there's no direct competition for confusion this time too. Everything, if, if everything goes, goes well and the district is successful, that gets transmitted, everything's ratified, that gets, gets transmitted to the county, which then places this assessment and that the pre-existing ongoing nineteen eighty-seven assessment on the tax roll and and members of the district will see it with the December uh property tax. Which means that potentially early calendar year twenty twenty-two, we should, or I should say, the district should see funds starting to come in from that. And so it, it presents a unique opportunity. It could be an opportunity to start a volunteer station staffing program before fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three. You know, it it's, it's up to where the, where the funds go, but it definitely, definitely has some, some unique opportunities this year.
Got a quick question. Chief?
Yes.
Hi. Uh, how many ballots are there total?
Uh, there's close, there will be close to six thousand ballots.
Okay. Um, I, uh, I'm glad that Heidi asked that question. Um, and it sounds like you have a better plan, so I'm happy to hear that. Um, is there a message or um uh, a brief that you can provide to people that want to share it?
Ab- absolutely. For folks that are, that are on Facebook, there's a lot of information that's been going out um related to this on our Facebook page. Um, and like you say, we're also working with, with the radio to get out ahead of, before those ballots land and with the triplicate. Um, there's also information on, that we've got and and we're, we're helping push it for the district on the, the district's website. So there, there's a lot of locations right now where the information is out there and and we're pushing it forward as well.
Yeah. And how many people are out walking for you?
Um, that's a combination as they're, they're available. Um, it, it was set to start this last Friday night. Um, there's part of the group that's, that's, says, yeah, I'm comfortable with it. So they're going out forward. Like I say, I just saw, just saw one folder come back in through the mail slot this evening from somebody that was out there. But we do, we do have the, the, the association members that that's being scheduled out and folks that are saying, yeah, I want to take on, take on an area. And so it's been the, those properties, they're breaking them up by neighborhoods and by street areas. So that it, instead of zipping back and forth all over town, they're focusing on, on areas, you know, around where they live or, yeah, being able to get out and be effective with it.
And are you looking for other volunteers?
Oh, well, definitely the association especially. But yeah, the, the, the group would definitely take other volunteers that, that are willing and want to get involved and get out there.
Yeah, and it's, it's just like on the Measure S side of things, it's important that, you know, the district cannot advocate for the measure. Um, you know, the volunteers out on their, on their own time can go and, and they're the ones that are door knocking. The district, what's important for them is they do, they get the information out there. Uh, and that's really what the city tried to do during the Measure S uh piece of it. There was the, the private group that came along. The, the present, support Crescent City Safe and Strong, which, which were able to advocate for the measure and I think was a, was a big part of our success. But, but getting the information out there is really what's important. That's, that really ties into what we're doing tonight too. I mean, if, if the district doesn't pass, then we cannot implement uh this, this plan. Uh, that's, that's just the, the facts of it. And so we would have to regroup. So as part of tonight's budget, we need to make sure that we're adopting a budget that looks forward, yet doesn't necessarily you know, count on, on one, what could happen. We need to plan for it, but we can't count on it. And so that's, that's kind of what you'll see in this spreadsheet is what we're going to concentrate on is the volunteers and some of those programs that we really uh could be looking at regardless of the, of the district piece just as a city. If the district piece doesn't pass, you know, they're going to have to, instead of talking about enhancing services like we are tonight, they're going to have to look at what cuts are going to need to be made because they won't have the funding to operate at the current level of service. Uh, you know, and that's, that's that decision that's uh, that's out there. So if there's not any more questions for the chief, and chief will obviously be here as we, as we work through. So there's more questions coming, definitely. Uh, you know, let them uh ask the chief and I'm sure he'll be able to answer. In this spreadsheet, kind of how it works, and I'll brag a little bit on Director Lieber, you know, and now you can, you can see that you have certain cells that you can enter information in on and part of it is the timing of personnel. Like we talked about, if the district doesn't pass, we have to reevaluate this plan and reevaluate what we're doing as far as personnel goes. So the year that we're talking about is twenty-one, twenty-two. That starts July first of twenty twenty-one, goes till June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So that's kind of the the financial year, fiscal year that, that we talk about in these different budgets. As we move this some, this cell here, so if you want to put in a different date uh for this position, you simply type it in and it will adjust the, the formulas back. Uh, so this will be taking it from July of twenty twenty-two to July of twenty twenty-four. And it's a bill that you can type in any date you want. And so if you wanted it to be October twenty twenty-four, it's going to prorate those costs. Uh, so it's a pretty, uh, pretty slick uh cell spreadsheet. Let me put those back. And we've, we have populated it with a recommendation that does work. And so you can see what those, what that initial sort of seed is, and then we can, we can tweak it from, from there. You look at the actual cell itself, you can see there's a triple uh nested if statement that's in there. So her Excel uh abilities, as you say, are are something that's uh very much appreciated. So the captain positions. So again, the thought here is with the fire department, support your volunteers now. Uh, i- implement the continued stipend program for the officers to continue what they're doing and the volunteers that are showing up. Create a sleeper program and that's where the volunteers would come, be able to sleep at the station and actually get a stipend for that piece of it and then increase training costs. Uh, other pieces, and this will be implemented July first this coming, this coming year. Uh, other pieces would be to fund those one-time costs. And these one-time costs include the apparatus replacement plan, which is recommended in the master plan. Uh, the sort of the small equipment piece that Chief Gillespie has recommended uh for the department. Uh, large diameter hose purchase for the city, upgrades to city station that we talked about, and then that volunteer of recruitment training piece. Another thing was mentioned as part of our fire department meeting was additional funding for the apparatus uh equipment replacement. So what you'll see here is in this first year, we have this first quarter uh fund, some of which have uh been allocated to the pool. There's a piece that we can start by seeding that equipment replacement plan for the fire department. Then in the out years, and this is something the chief and I have talked about a lot as well. The volunteer program and making sure that we keep the volunteers is the number one priority for this department. As you start to bring in positions, you want to make sure you do it slowly so that you have a good pulse on the effect of that department. So talking with the chief and at least talking with the volunteers and the battalion chiefs and captains and so forth. We want to bring them on one at a time. So you, you bring one on. The department adapts to that. You have the additional resources. You reevaluate. You keep in good communication with the department, with how it's working. And then you're able to bring one on each additional year. So that's kind of the stair stepping approach. That's sort of the, the plan that we think would work best on the fire department side of things. And that's uh here in the recommendations from the committee as well. Working our way down into police, you have, again, similar type of, of a spreadsheet, similar type of, of functionality of it. So we have our three officer positions. Uh, the thought here is we will be able to hire one as soon as we possibly could, really. Uh, so that's, once the budget is adopted, that will be in July or just before in June, by the time they actually go through background and get started, it's probably not until October, until you'd actually see that officer with boots on the ground. Once you have one officer on, then you can look at making that shift from sergeant to lieutenant. Once they actually get off of FTO and they're out on their own, that's when you'd be able to make the transition for that officer to step into detective. So by hiring one, you can get the, the detective and lieutenant piece of it as well. Then you could go and you could look at hiring the additional officers in each of the next two years. The piece that goes along with that is reduction in overtime. And this is another piece that we talked about. Chief currently has done a really good job and he has cut our overtime down from a budget of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and this speaks to the officers as well, uh, per year down to about eighty. So this is just some ongoing savings that, that we don't currently have in that budget. As you add additional personnel on, we think that you can save an additional forty thousand. So you're going to reduce your overtime from a budget now of a hundred and twenty-five down to a budget that's going to be somewhere around forty. And there's a certain amount of overtime that you just can't, y- y- you can't eliminate it all. There's people that need to go to training, there's court appearances. So that's kind of the, the minimal amount that we see, but a drastic reduction from what we have uh currently now. This budget though, does depend on how many officers you have. So basically, if you bring one officer on, you're going to see about, well, you brought him on for a full year, you'd see a third of it. And that's what you're seeing in each of these additional years. So by the time you get three officers on, you're seeing that full amount and it prorates back as you uh, as you have less officers on in these early years. Canine officer, again, kind of transitioning the, the department. So you get an officer on, you'd be making your switch to detective, uh lieutenant. Lot of additional training going on as well. You have new equipment. So making the transition for that second canine would come in July of twenty twenty-two. So making the transition for that second canine would come in July of 2022. So in about a year. Again, this one's easy to, uh, to change. You can simply just put in whatever date you want. And that then backs it up. We're backing up a year, if that were the recommendation of the committee. Operationally though, this works well. Body cameras and tasers. We talked a lot about that to start the meeting off. This would be the Axon seven plus premium. It is what this number is. So that's that 47,000 for the next five years. Uh, if you wanted to go to a different plan in this, again, this is a nice tool. You can simply plug in whatever, whatever dollar amount you have, and it, uh, and it will plug it in there. We'll keep it at that for now. Vehicle replacement. We need new vehicles. The officers are driving vehicles that have well over 100,000 miles on them that need to be replaced. This plan accounts for a new vehicle each year going forward. There are grant opportunities that are out there. A lot of them are match opportunities through USDA or possibly through, uh, other funding sources. We could very easily turn this 55,000 instead of one vehicle, you could turn that into two. Uh, but again, that's, that's going to be our goal. That's what we're going to be going after. Uh, this would be the, uh, this would be the plan. Theory that doesn't fit very nicely in any of this, given the fact that we only have 1.3 million each year, is the improvements to the PD station. And so these are the improvements that we talked about. Uh, with the 810,000 in design or in total construction costs for the various pieces, and then it also needs to be designed. The recommendation here would be to go forth with design, get a shovel-ready project again. Go ahead and just fund that now. And then we'll be looking at possibly a debt service. So if you look at a million dollars, that's $60,000 a year for 25 years, they given the, the current rate. So I mean, those, those numbers are, are low right now because of interest rates, it could fluctuate, but for planning purposes, we feel they're, they're fairly accurate. Uh, so this will be the $60,000 cost. If you went this route, you would design in this next year, you'd be under construction basically, either at the end of this next year or possibly 22, 23. Uh, so right around the corner, a little over a year, and you could have all of your, uh, improvements implemented at that point.
Eric, that's just for the improvements to the current building, correct?
This is just the improvements for the current building. This does not, this does not consider that, you know, that the new police station in which we'd really need to, you know, buy a piece of property, and you're probably looking at, instead of a $1 million price tag, you're looking at probably more like a seven or eight million dollar price tag.
Right, and had, did you do any research into that option?
We did. We have, we have that study that was completed for the, for the, for the PD, and that's really where it, where it sits. It's just that larger, you know, project of seven, eight, 10 million, depending on, on what it is.
Okay.
And, you know, if you wanted to go that route, we could invest some time or effort into, you know, trying to evaluate that and then, and then looking at the debt service. But, you know, a debt service on something like that without a grant is going to be, well, this is a million and say that one's just the easy number, that is 10 million, this will be $600,000 a year. So really not feasible unless there's that big grant windfall.
I was just thinking, um, you know, if you were going to consider that at all, then you wouldn't want to invest the $100,000 into design.
You know, it's, it's a good discussion. It's one that I've thought about a lot because I, I think we do need to consider that as part of our long-term. Um, and so, you know, that the, the question is, when is that going to be? What kind of function can we get out of this station? You know, do we, by doing this, do you get your, you know, that value out of it for now? And then is there going to be additional value that is now added to that site when you go in and sell it? Those, those would be the trade-offs. Uh, you know, a new PD, I think you're probably a minimum, uh, you, you know, five at the earliest, but probably much more likely is the 10 to 15-year timeframe before, you know, you could be in that, uh, that new facility.
Thank you.
All right, working our way down into streets. And so this is that same basic discussion that, that Mr. Olson had with you previously, $50,000 a year, uh, for basic, you know, your, your stopgap measures, your, your potholes, your crack seal. And this is above what we currently do. So this would be an enhanced effort at that point each and every year to try to address some of those things like Fisture. We talked about, uh, some sidewalk repairs. Again, just some money that you go out and you, you actually, uh, be proactive and address some of these things that you were talking about, Chair Shlong, uh, or Councilmember Smith. Go and identify. This probably gets you eight to 10 curbs. So you would identify the utmost priority ones, and you would get those done. And then a couple of years later, you'd be able to do the same thing again. Uh, increase striping, uh, as well, and have that, uh, that budget for that. So we're making sure that, that that is done and up to date. And then you get into these projects, and this is where timing does matter. So construction-wise, it's in the middle of summer typically. You have to do your street work when the weather's nice. That splits the financial year, fiscal year. So you can look at 250,000 in this next year and 250,000 in the, the year after that, all of which is really construction next summer. So I mean, you think about July of 2022, that's kind of when you're right in the middle of this. So you would start construction in May of 2022, you'd probably be done in August of 2022, something like that. And then in this project here, which we have 450,000, this is a $500,000 project under construction this next summer. This one wouldn't happen in 2023, it would happen in 2024, and you'd have a $450,000 project in 2024. You know, the number goes down a little bit because you're starting to add some of that personnel that we saw in the police and the fire side of things. You don't quite have as much money. Uh, and then you could do the same thing here. You don't want to see one year, but, but there would be another year, and you'd be under construction in 2026. So basically, every other year, you'd get a major street project going that's funded by Measure S. Uh, the first year would be focused on preservation. This was some of the design costs. We think this is a, this is a good budget number. It might, you might have more money that will flow into the construction piece of it as well. Uh, because again, it's not a, a real technical design, but given the current workload, we are going to need some consultant help on it. So you could have a slightly larger project here. Say that preservation, reach back, pull street up, get it in good condition, and then possibly another preservation type project. So you could go dig out street repair, A Street slurry seal project, something like that. As we get together as the committee, as a council, you know, once we adopt this budget, we'd be able to look at each of these and reevaluate kind of where those priorities are. So this is just more of a general thought process on it. And then you have the pool piece of it. Uh, so the pool had some funds in this year, and then this just represents 25%. So we've heard a lot over the course of our meetings, this is everything that, that we had talked about. And there's a strategy to fund it all. Uh, I, I think it's, I, I'm fairly pleased with it, and we can adjust things as the committee or council wants to see it adjusted. So how does it all come together? And then what are, what are the final prices? Now that we've looked at all these pieces and put dollars to them. So in this first year, here's how the summary piece of this works. Here's the different components we talked about, fire, police, streets and pool, uh, the different years that they've fallen. The total estimated Measure S revenues, and everything's in today's dollars. So that's where you don't see it, you know, it with inflation or the tax dollars are going to increase. This is assuming there's some inflation, but there's also an increase in, in general taxes. So it's just everything is to, is in today's dollars. 300,000, the consultant we use for sales tax, and that we should receive 1.3 million each and every year. So those are those costs. The formulas and the, the, uh, dollars that you inputted in here roll right up into these different categories through the different years. And you have a certain amount based on what we have, a certain amount remaining in each of those years or in a deficit, depending on how you allocate your money, leaving a fund balance. So as your fund balance goes, so if you have 63,000 out of this first year that you've now saved, and you have 134 out of your next year, your fund balance is going to grow to 197. And then that, that goes forth each and every year. Another key component of this that I think is a component that needs to be discussed and is one that, that we've implemented in the general fund or the council has implemented in the general fund, is a reserve policy. So this is kind of a rainy day fund. We ended up leaning on this pretty heavily during COVID. Uh, we hit the, we, we hit this unexpected economic downturn. We had people that we didn't want to lay off. How do you do that? You have to build in a, a little bit of a cushion. And so that really saved us as a city. You know, now we're able to, uh, to be in a good position to recover. So looking at this, it's 25% of your estimated expenses for that particular year. So in this first year, if you have to take 25% of the 237, which are total expenses, you should have, say, you should have 59,250 exactly. This is how much you would have if this allocation is correct. Now, a big piece of this is the pool funding. And then another piece that's in here that the committee can change, you can do what you want with on this, is how much do you want to see possibly the fire department for? That was a recommendation that we had heard. If you fund it for that 60, you end up just above where we want to be as far as a reserve. Now, we end up losing this a little bit in this first year because there's just the needs and we want to start to implement some of these things early. So in this, in this second year, we would be adding to our reserve by 134,000. It's not quite enough to get us to the, to that 25% reserve. The current policy of the council says we want to make sure we have a plan and are working our way towards that. So where you do reach it and actually exceed it is in the second year. Or in the, the second full year, I should say. Then you can see that, uh, this is the reserve balance you should have. This is the reserve balance that you have. So we're over it by quite a bit. And then in this next year, you can actually spend more money than what you make, you know, kind of on these sort of the one time, and so you sort of end up balancing this, this cash flow. To whereas in the end, in their fifth year, you would want to have 334,000 in reserve, uh, you actually have 357 if you go with this. Another big piece of this that we didn't really touch on in the streets piece is that SB1. It's not part of the Measure S funds, but it does play a critical role in what we do streetwise. So this is kind of what we talked about with the design piece of it. Make sure we have shovel-ready projects. The city's getting this money. This will be the staff's recommendation to the council. We have some money saved up. But it's to turn this and make sure that Front Street is absolutely ready to go for that next piece. Make sure that A Street is absolutely ready to go. You know, Harding, some, some of these, these bigger sort of street projects, K Street was the other one. Uh, and, and get those in that condition, and then continue to do that so that either Measure S funds or grant funds can be spent to actually do the construction. So that is, uh, that's the tool that we had before us. It's seeded with some of the recommendations and some of the thoughts. Uh, there's also a sort of a graph that you can visually see. You know, fire department's going to take a little bit of time to get exactly where it needs to go. Uh, and so it's, it's not funded fully in these first years, allows for greater street projects to be done. Kind of that cash flow piece until it gets to that full allocation, that master plan can actually be, be implemented. So you kind of see some of those, those pieces and how they lay out for each of the different components on just a graph. Uh, and then where we're coming in short, building our reserves, but and then as we sort of balance cash flow and those out here. Okay, so I can, I can leave the, sort of the model, uh, up here, um, to turn it back over to, to you, Mayor, to you, Chair Shlong.
Before we move forward, I have a quick question on the pool. And so how do we, um, just thinking about it, you know, the top track on how you address the public when, um, instead of projects for the pool or increased staffing or those things, it's just like, well, we're just going to offset the general fund. So how's, what's your recommendation on that?
So the, with Measure S, it, it, it really wasn't about enhancing the pool operations. It was making the, the current pool operations sustainable.
Yes, okay.
You know, and so sustaining operations. Uh, and that's what really allowed us to, to open as early as what we did. We had this first quarter, we went to the council, there's big Measure S signs, you know, thank you Measure S outside the pool. And this is what's going to, to make this amenity sustainable for our community and spread those costs uh, across everyone that buys goods in the city, which is what's really great about it being a part of the sales tax.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Before we get into a extended discussion, I do believe that we need to open a public comment. So that the public gets an opportunity and then I, I think that the committees can take a, a whack at it. So let's open up public comment at this time. Is there any public comment?
Don't see any hands raised there from our Zoom audience.
And there's none on the email side either.
All right, thank you. All right, let's bring it back to the committee and, uh, the council at this time then.
Uh, Measure S, uh, committee members, do any of you have questions, comments, thoughts? Ernie?
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments up. I'm a little uncomfortable only from a standpoint, um, not personally, but from a standpoint of keeping the faith in quotes, um, so that you maintain good support among the community for Measure S. I, and it's on, it's on the pool and one other item, but on the pool, we had discussed, you know, the pool's needs and the costs involved. But my reluctance with just seeing the $325,000 figure is yes, it'll be used to address those operational costs. But I don't see, I'd like to see something a little more substantial that's, that shows that some of those funds are going to be used to address those long-term capitalization costs.
Specifically in regard to like the heaters and some of the building improvements, different things like that, uh?
Yeah, yes, yes. I, i- in summary, um, and more from the standpoint of, um, of, of, um, education of those who may inquire as to how the money is being spent.
That's how I was feeling, Ernie.
Yes, and then we can certainly, you know, we can do that on a, on a annual basis. You know, depending on what those, what those needs are, because they're going to change year in, year out. And so that's, I was actually talking to Director Lieber a little bit about this is, you know, Measure S will have a separate accounting. And you're going to have specific things that Measure S goes to, to pay for. Uh, and so the pool, right, you have personnel and you have, uh, the, uh, the equipment, you know, parts. And, and all those things make up the overall budget. Uh, and so we could, we could look at, at specifying that Measure S went to pay for more than parts, uh, and capitalization piece of it.
Well, and, and along the similar lines, and only as food for thought, is I am, I have a potential concern about the perception of the 25% reserve account. Um, I understand its purpose, but there may be those that would question whether or not, you know, did they vote for a reserve account or did they vote for spending all the money and getting it done? So my thought is, is that instead of calling it a reserve account that you, since, since I see it from a standpoint of my interpretation of Measure S, I'll phrase it that way so I can be corrected if I'm wrong, is that, um, uh, you do want to do projects such as, such as the, the street projects we discussed. And we do want to do projects, uh, and when I say we on that one, I mean the community as a whole, um, to keep the pool running, i.e. replace a heater. So instead of calling it a, a, a 25% rainy day reserve fund, maybe it should be called a revolving fund for capital projects related to the pool, related to the, um, streets or even the fire department. If, um, you know, at some future date, you need to reserve, uh, reserve money to buy a fire truck.
I thought about the same way, Ernie. I wrote the same thing down. How does a 25% reserve policy, um, work well with a, an income that is from tax measure? And so I think we talked a lot about, um, I wrote down, um, replacement of e- equipment or replacement of, you know, uh, law enforcement vehicles where you don't have a fund to, you know, manage the depreciation every year and replace them when they're done um, out of service. And so maybe that 25% goes into those kinds of funds instead of the general fund, rainy day fund that the city has implemented, which is a great policy. But I'm not sure it's the right way to use the city's tax dollars.
Well, and I'm, I'm afraid that it's the perception. It'll be missed. There are, we all know there are members in any local government and in national government that are always looking for the, uh, way to misinterpret things. So, uh, I, I think labeling it other than a reserve fund or rainy day fund um, would help, might avoid some problems. And then my last comment is, well, I sure wish this, you guys had funded, rep- Well, I sure wish this, you guys had funded replacement for that one car at the city police department, it's really kind of embarrassing.
Light blue.
It, it's, it has served the community well, it's time to put it out to pasture. And I don't mean, you know, abandon it in a pasture, but it's time.
Think often enjoying driving it.
Hey, Mr. Weir, uh, are, were you done, uh, member, committee member Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Kimes said something to, to Chief Gillespie. That I found pretty interesting and then she asked if he had a good team behind him. With, uh, the benefit assessment and I noticed we kept, well, I, I didn't, but there. We kept referring, yeah, I guess we all did, kept referring to if the district gets their benefit assessment, if the district gets their benefit assessment. We need to keep in mind that all the volunteers are city volunteers. And I remember one of the first meetings. And I also remember voting on, on spending for the major S committee. And I do believe that the Crescent City Volunteer Firefighters Association was a pretty big contributor to that. Because they noticed that there was a need. A need, there was a need in, in public safety. Um, a chief that I cared dearly about paid the ultimate price. For something we didn't have and. Our police, uh, uh, not to mention our police force that's under attack everywhere, so. You know, yeah, he does have a good, Chief Gillespie does have a good team for his benefit assessment. And there was also a good team, whether, you know, I ha- I was a little, a little on the reserve side of, of measure S. In the beginning, I, I didn't know what to make of it. Nobody wants to pay more taxes, I know I don't. But it's here, we, you know, I just feel like. They were the re, they were, that was where it started, was in that fire department. The first meeting was at that fire station. That, that's all I have, thanks.
A- a- absolutely. Certainly a lot to, to think back on and, uh, and prioritize when it comes to, to making sure that we address some of those critical needs.
Eric, is the, the slowdown on the buildup of the fire funds, um, in this particular model? Because we're waiting this first year to see what happens with the assessment?
Yes, I mean, th- there is that piece of it, because obviously we can't. We, we shouldn't hire positions, you know, obviously we don't have the, the funding to back those up. And when it comes to the fire department, it is two parent agencies. Uh, but the other piece, and this is really to talk with Chief Gillespie and I always talk to his battalion chiefs and league captains and whatnot. It is with, with them in mind and so the, you know, the, the quote-unquote, the death of a volunteer fire department can be when you start to really add paid personnel. And so we want to keep a good pulse and I know Chief can speak to a lot better than I can, but it, I mean, it, it lives and dies with these volunteers. And so as you, as you add, you want to add slowly so you can keep a good pulse on how they feel, how the department's, you know, moving and reacting. And so that's kind of that, uh, that implementation over a period of years. Chief, if you can, can you address that as well?
Yeah, the, you know, the, the master plan laid it out in, in kind of a certain order, things happening. Subsequently together. And in, you know, the, I think the, the value especially, we all know that, that change can be, can be rough, it can be tough to get used to. This is, other than the fire chief, this is a, is an all volunteer fire department. And it can, if you, if you bring too much change into the mix too quickly. You can, you can have issues with that, a lot of growing pains can go with that. And so, you know, being able to, to phase in the, the volunteer station staffing program as the first step. And that really is the, the piece potential that, and I'll say, when the district passes this assessment. It gives the, gives the ability to step into that fairly quickly, once the money starts coming in or, or we know the money's there. That we could start that piece of it. And then to phase the, the paid captain positions in to bring a first one on. And then, and then, you know, as the, as the, the chart showed, bring the first one on and then bring a second one on. Potentially in that, in that year later and then a third one. Or we may find that with the, with the, the volunteer station staffing program. And the first one helping, helping spread that load out. That then we can step, possibly it's a two-year cycle between personnel. We don't know for sure at this point. I do know that, that if we were having this meeting last Thursday night. I'd probably be pretty blurry-eyed because that was a three-hour night of sleep on Wednesday night, because we ran, we ran calls during the night. And any of these components will give the ability to help spread that load. For the volunteers, for the battalion chiefs pulling the duty. Every, every piece of this is going to be a step in the right direction. And, you know, Chief Wakefield started, started down this path. The night that I was sworn in as the interim fire chief with both the city council. And the, the fire district board and the joint meeting, I was item number two on the, the list. Item number one was to start down the path for a request for proposals for a master plan. And we, we were able to develop that plan. Unfortunately, Chief Wakefield didn't live long enough to see that. To, to make it through to that plan and what was going to come next. And if, I'd like to see now that we've got measure S and that we will be passing the, the, uh. District assessment to bring that funding component in. I want to see the, the start of this plan go before my time to, to step back and, and. Pass the baton to a next person comes to be. And I think we've got a, we've got a good, good path to do that, we've got some unique opportunities. This first year to, to be able to fund around through it. Maybe through, maybe through the reserve, the apparatus and equipment reserve. Maybe some of that gets redirected when the, the district funding comes onboard. And we start that, that volunteer station staffing program.
Heidi?
Thank you, um. The reserve, the reserve to me is, I agree with, with other, uh, committee members. Um, the community voted for this because they want to see action. And, uh, they want something tangible that they can, they can acknowledge that, oh, wow, okay, some things are really happening now. Um, all of these items, I, I fully endorse the fire, the pool, the police force. There's one little tidbit that, um. Hasn't really been discussed and, I mean, roads, yes, you've talked about roads as a, as a option for some of these, um. I guess excess funds. But there's a new building, a property, a city hall. Is there any, um, or maybe I've been out of the picture for a while now, but is there a, a grant that you're going after? Is there something that, um. Would prevent you from putting a portion of these funds towards redoing your city hall? Um, focusing on your downtown and, um. You know, repairing your fountain, your beautiful, amazing fountain that was vandalized. Um, that I, I feel like some of those visual, um, components that could really be accomplished with. What I noticed, um, each fiscal year that you're, that you're proposing going into. Uh, a reserve and so I, I'm just, I'm questioning that.
And certainly, you know, measure S funds, they're, they are general funds, uh, and so they could be used on anything. In the, in that the general funds supports, all those things that you mentioned were, were things that general funds supports. Um, when we, when we really, you know, went after the measure S funds, it was those four sort of areas that, that we have talked about, which is why we focused in on, on this. Do I think that those conversations that you're talking about, uh, will be part of our budget conversations with the council? You know, absolutely, and so when we look at it as, as a bigger picture, as a city, I think those are areas we do need to focus on. If the measure S committee wanted to recommend that we do some of those projects, I don't think there's anything prohibiting us from, from doing that. Uh, and so that would be the, the purview of the, of measure S, uh, and the council from a legal standpoint.
Okay, okay, thank you, I would like to just do what we can to bolster your tax base.
Yeah, a- and I think, right, from an economic development standpoint. That does do just that, right, I mean, as you have economic development, you have more people buying goods, right? You should have more money circulating into measure S.
Thank you for bringing that up, uh, Heidi, I, um. I think city hall is a very important project, um, and from, for many, many reasons. Um, I don't know if going down that road with measure S funds is going to be appropriate right now. Because that's not what the committee went out and marketed to the citizens. Um, but it doesn't mean that this, you know, the savings that the city is going to see from investing. Measure S funds into all of these four areas is, you know, going to offset some of your revenues. So that you can invest those dollars that you're saving through, um, the measure S funds towards city hall. Um, you know, there's a lot of blight in our city, um, tremendous blight. And that's something that, you know, is very important to a lot of people. And so I, I, you know, you know, if we're going to throw in things into, you know, the, the bucket, blight is a huge factor in the city. Um, but when, you know, measure S, streets, fire, pool, law enforcement. So if we, if you find a way to incorporate those other things, that's great. Um, but I would focus on those four things, this is just totally my opinion. But, you know, the, the twenty-five percent reserves. You guys, I can see offsetting some of your budget line items with replacement dollars for, um. Equipment, vehicles, fire apparatuses, heaters in the pool. Um, that are going to save you money and those dollars should be focused on things that are going to improve the city. That's just my, my opinion, um. Where are Cindy, did you have anything to add or any questions?
No, I, I agree with you on that, I, the same thing that Committee Member Perry said. Um, it is kind of a scary thought for people to just say, see a rainy day fund with no. No into it, you know, and. But other than that, I'm in agreement with all the other things.
And just to clarify on the reserve balance, right, I mean, and once you build it. It's in theory there, so you don't have to contribute all the time, right, it's just, it's getting the balance, uh, to that point. Uh, and it, it is something the council will need to. Possibly think about as these are general funds and so as we, as we look at it, uh, we will still, the council will still need to have that twenty-five percent. Uh, or take a look at that policy, uh, just in general. But I definitely hear what you all are saying.
Committee Member Perry had his hand up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, very uncomfortable. Even trying to figure out a way to say this. I just think it's awful early in this whole process to do anything that threatens it. Or allows it, an action to be misunderstood. And the four guiding principles we can all agree on, pool, fire, police, roads. But I would be even very concerned if there's any discussions that indicate that. Since we can. Shift money out of the general, save money out of the general fund by shifting a, a cost to measure S. Now we can all of a sudden start spending it on a new city hall, which has been brought up. Certainly not against a new city hall, but I, I, uh, don't want to do anything that might jeopardize the community's support of measure S.
I agree, Ernie, and let me reiterate, I wasn't saying to shift dollars from the general fund expense. And use measure S funds to cover it, I was saying that some of these projects will save the city money in general. And so those, those savings they can use to do things like city hall or blight, you know, reduction. Um, but I think focusing on these four items that we went out and walked the streets and sold to the city residents is important.
All right, Councilmember Altman had his hand raised, so I'll open the floor to him right now.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, give my, um. Put my two cents in about the reserve fund. So if you have a, a, a checking account and you have a savings account. And you spend every single dime in your checking account. And you don't have anything in your savings, what happens when your alternator breaks? Or say you're furloughed a couple of days a month and you don't quite make your one point three million that you're counting on, so you have a shortfall. Or you have a budget overrun, I think it's very wise to have a twenty-five percent reserve fund in case of any of those variables that can happen. You don't have a set budget and you're not guaranteed that that budget will be fulfilled. And then you don't know what's going to happen, you know, there's all kinds of different variables, there's. There's rain during construction that shuts everything down, there's a lot of different things that happen. That you need that reserve fund there to ensure that you can make your budget no matter what. And that's just my two cents, I don't think that. Uh, the public would be disappointed in responsibility, okay, that's all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Altman. Do we have anything further from the, uh, measure S committee? All right, then I will open it up for the council at this time.
May, uh, go ahead, Isaiah. Uh, just a couple of things, um. That I've made notes about, um, I, I, I understand exactly what, what Mr. Perry is talking about, it's about messaging. It's about how we communicate, um, it really isn't, it really isn't about a fi- a fiscal accounting issue. It, it's, it's about, uh, what our community hears and what they see. Uh, we live in the state of California, the last thing in the world we need to do is talk about a rainy day fund. Um, because that just sets some people off immediately that says, how can we have sixteen billion dollars sitting? And yet we can't figure out how to do this, that, or the other thing. So, uh, uh, it's a messaging issue. I do think we need to be fiscally responsible, I think we need to, to, uh, understand that we can't just spend every penny that we have. Uh, but our first responsibility, I believe, is council is to rebuild the twenty-five percent, uh, uh, general fund reserve that we have. And that's going to take us some time. Um, and so I, I do believe, as has already been said, that this community voted for this one percent, uh, sales tax. With the, uh, with the assurance that things are going to get done. Um, putting things in reserves doesn't sound like it's getting done. Um, I, I'd be more inclined to find ways to simply, uh, set a budget line item in the general fund that's completely separate from measure S. To simply try, try to rebuild our, our reserves that doesn't have anything to do with it. I, I, as far as I'm concerned, and I, and I thought about this, um, uh, from the first time that, uh, that, that I. Even was thought about the idea, the idea was floated about a reserve is, I don't think it needs to be in any of our messaging whatsoever, it needs to come off of that spreadsheet. Um, because I think it sends the wrong message, so that's one. Um, and there's other ways to do, accomplish that, that doesn't involve measure S, I believe. Uh, secondly, um, just, uh. Overall, I just want to say that I'm very, very impressed with the presentation and with the foresight of trying to, to navigate all of these things. And put them into a, a, a time, uh, uh, factor that allows us to do all the things that has been talked about. factor that allows us to do all the things that has been talked about. The one thing that I will just simply say, the Axion body cam taser, to me, shouldn't even be a discussion. If it's not Measure S, then it's coming in, as far as I'm concerned, it's going in next year's budget. Measure S or not, this is the world we live in. Our officers deserve this. Our community deserves this. There should be no conversation about this issue whatsoever. That's just me. If it happens with Measure S, great. If it doesn't, then it will, it will be the thing that I lobby for probably harder than anything else, just from a regular budget standpoint. As far as the pool goes, I, I agree with, with Mr. Perry. I think it's also a messaging issue. The, the, the general fund has been supplementing the pool for years anyway. So why, why not send this message? Why not say, instead of its $325,000, why not say that we are, Measure S is, is accounting for $275,000 of operational support to the pool and we are also setting aside for capital improvement for the pool, $50,000 every year. Because all these things at the pool cost money. The fact of the matter is, is, is if Measure S hadn't passed, I'm a firm believer that I would have been advocating for us to continue to supplement the pool. I'm not willing to let the pool close. So I, I think that we, it's another messaging issue where, where if we say $275,000 is going to operational support and $50,000 annually is, is going towards capital improvements of the pool. See, I think people will resonate with that. We're gonna, we're gonna set some money aside to get stuff fixed that needs to be fixed. That doesn't sound like a reserve fund to me. That sounds like being proactive just to get the money to get some of these bigger items done. Streets, I'm great with everything that you laid out. Bottom line is, let's get something done. That, that's what the community is going to want to know. Did you get something done? I do believe that we need to, to continue to look at, at the big projects. And even the, the biggest project of all, and that's Front Street. If there's a scenario, I think we need to be prepared to pivot. If, if all of a sudden the, the, the new RACE, the, the new acronym is RACE, what used to be oh gosh, it was Tiger, then it was Bill, now it's RACE. If, if the, if the funding opportunity comes, then we need to be able to pivot and, and, and then use other dollars for that because it's certainly the most iconic place that people are going to see that we're doing stuff. And then the final thing that I want to say is as far as fire goes, I am fine with the strategy. I'm fine with if, with it happening over a, a, a period of years. On one condition, that the Volunteer Association is, is absolutely supportive of the process. If the volunteers are not supportive of this strategy, then we need to go back and figure out a way. Because we cannot, we cannot alienate our volunteer fire department. We need those men and women and we need them to feel supported. I, I trust that, that you guys are doing that, Mr. Weir, Chief Gillespie. I know that's what you guys are, your goals are, but, but whatever it takes to make sure that they know. And, and, and I don't want to talk about when the benefit assessment. I don't want to talk about if the benefit assessment passes. Let's talk about when the benefit assessment passes so that we're, we're just going to move forward. This is going to happen. This community gets it now. You know, we didn't, and I'll just say, we, we did not do our community justice when it came to the last benefit assessment. We confused them. Our timing was bad. I'll take responsibility for that. I sensed that and, and, and yet we, you know, we probably should have just put a, put a, put a stop and said, we're not ready. Because of all those things, I kind of felt that, but, but I, you know, you listen to consultants and, and I, I value consultants, but sometimes you got to follow your gut. My gut says the community just didn't understand. They were confused by Measure R. They were confused by the ballot. I believe our community is going to step up to the plate. They're going to support this assessment. And as long as our volunteers feel like the strategy supports them, supports those who are standing duty, then, then I appreciate all the work that's, that's gone into this and I, I think you guys, you know, Mr. Weir, you and your team, both our chiefs, our finance department, everybody, you guys have done a great job. Measure S Committee, you guys did a great job of, of weighing in and, and asking the questions. And I, I, I'm pretty impressed, honestly. I think we have a solid strategy in front of us. So, but that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Open the floor up to the other council members. Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Altman, do you guys have anything else to discuss concerning?
I just, I just have a quick question. So who takes responsibility for the $1.3 million estimate? And who pays for the budget for Measure S when it's short?
So the $1.3 million estimate did come from our tax consultants. So HDL is a company that, you know, we've hired. And so they've given us their, their opinion that that would be that revenue estimate. Is, yeah, but it is just that. It's, it's an estimate. It's a budget. It's not guaranteed. COVID hit, right? Changed everything. There could be other factors that also changed. So and that's, that's just the world that we, that we live in. If the, those revenues are general fund revenues, so the, and the general fund expenses too, from just that pure side of things. Granted, we're going to track them separately and there's going to be very much an accountability that comes with these funds. That's what we promised to the, to the taxpayers as part of this oversight board is to look at all those things, to look at all those itemized expenses. Over the, if the expenses go over the revenues, the general fund is going to pay for it.
Thank you.
And I think it's a great observation and a great question. The one thing that I will say that in, in, in now almost seven years on the council, HDL has, has been right on in their assessments within a, within a pretty small margin of error in their, in their ability to, to project tax revenue, even in mid-year this last year in the midst of COVID. The numbers that, that, you know, we were pulling way back in anticipation of just, of just being crushed. And, and, and they said, no, that's not what's going to happen. And they started giving us projections. And the bottom line is, is, is some of us went, huh, I'm not sure I feel comfortable with that. They were right. They, they were right. So I think it's a great observation and that's part of the reason why I'm thankful that we have had a top line consultant that has been looking at tax revenues for us for, for many, many years. So, but the, the ultimate reality is just what Mr. Weir said, right? If it comes up short, somebody's going to have to pay. And all of this is general fund. So we better remember that when we go ahead and put together our budget.
Well, I would say that, you know, as council members, that's why you meet every two weeks and a budget is a budget. And you have to pivot and punt and, you know, you just make changes as you need, as you need. And you have to be able to go with, go with the ebbs and flows of what the the revenues that come in because they're so, you know, dependent. Ernie?
Well, as a Measure S Committee member, I am prepared and would, would volunteer to attend any subsequent meetings as you go through the fiscal year. And you can give us a brief update on revenue and are you meeting the revenue goals that we set? And what adjustments may be needed to make in the expenditures. That's a normal budgeting process and I think it applies to Measure S.
We, there are quarterly reports. We have, we have Linda Lever, our finance director, who, who has her hand up and would like to participate, obviously, in this, is welcome in this conversation.
We would love to hear from her.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that Protem score is correct. Our, our sales tax consultant, HDL, has been extremely accurate over the years in their estimates. And they do give us an update every quarter of what they're seeing so that we can make adjustments. But a couple of other points to maybe provide a little reassurance is that the plan that's kind of laid out at the moment doesn't spend $1.3 million exactly every year. We sort of build up to it. So we, by the time we actually get to the full implementation with all the staffing and everything else, we'll have a couple of years of history before we get there. And then, you know, you do have, you know, whether it's going to be a, put in a capital reserve or, you know, however else it's going to be. But that, that unspent piece that carries forward from year to year, you know, will be there to, to sort of help if we have an off year. And then the final thing I just wanted to say is that some of these projects or expenses, you know, like staffing, you know, once you've hired that person, that's an annual expense every year. But some of these are projects. So, you know, if you get to a year where you have something like COVID, you know, happens and all of a sudden you're projecting that your revenues are going to dip. You know, one thing that, you know, like that the city did is you look at all of your projects that you're thinking about and you just put them on hold for a while. So that's, you know, just something to consider.
Linda, your spreadsheet was pretty amazing.
Thanks.
I'm also a big fan. I'm just going to wrap up by saying that what I felt was the most important for the police department was the body cams and the taser package, the premier package. I think that there's nothing about that that has any risk. It's all, it's all good. And I would highly recommend you move forward with that. I think the detective position is really important. And regarding streets, I liked, I liked everything that Mr. Olson laid out. I wish, you know, our streets are in such bad disrepair. You know, I wish we could do more, but I think that that you've identified some really good projects to move forward with right away and to make a difference. And people will see that, you know, coming to fruition. I think that's important.
All right.
Sorry. That's okay. I wanted to say that I agreed with, with what Ernie was saying about identifying actual dollars for the pool part of the budget. I think it's going to be important. And then the way that Mayor Protem Inscore wrapped everything up was pretty much right on. It's really about messaging. It's, you know, making sure that the public understands what you're doing, where you're going, that you're moving forward with what they, you know, they voted for. And I think that if we continue to stay in contact and, you know, the Measure S Committee is able to have some talking points moving forward when there are questions, I think that this is going to be a win-win for everybody. And I'm just super proud of all of you. Very proud. So that's all I had to say to wrap up for me. Anybody else from the Measure S Committee want to add any final comments? Mr. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. Matts, we weren't able to hear anything you said.
Sounds like the internet.
I'm just you know, the can you hear me now?
Try, try again.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
My, okay, my connection sucks, so I'll just wait till I get a better one maybe next meeting.
Maybe you can put it in the chat.
Okay, let's try this one more time. The premium package on the the premium package on the tasers is, 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 I think was a very good thing. We got, you know, all the benefits of that plus the additional virtual reality training. And the detective position would be, you know, a great thing as was discussed. I like the idea of the pool. You know, being the line items, you know, instead of, oh, the pool's going to get this much money, you know, making sure that kind of, you know, tell us where the money's spent so we can, so the public can see why the pool needs the money. Because there are a lot of people that look at this as a public safety bill as opposed to supporting the pool. They look at it as, you know, we need fire, we need the streets, we need the cops, and we need the pool.
I think that he was saying he agreed with the Axion proposal and the detective position. And I heard that he liked having aligned items in the budget for the pool. Not, I didn't know, I don't know if I caught anything else, Mr. Matts.
Yeah, that was, that was the gist of it is that this is, you know, was kind of, kind of billed as a public safety thing. So we need to let people see where the money is going to at the pool.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a good point. Yeah, you're, you're cutting out again. Are you still there?
Yeah, Mr. Matts, we can't hear you. You can go ahead and mute yourself again.
All right. If, if there isn't if there isn't anything further from the Oversight Committee, I actually want to take my turn. I haven't had a chance to talk yet.
Councilmember Wright had something.
Okay, yeah, Councilmember Wright, go ahead.
Just, just one small thing. I, I, amazing work on the presentation. And I just wanted to throw a, a little bit more support behind the, the new body cam and taser system. It kind of seems like our old stuff was like typing with a typewriter. And the new Acxiom stuff's kinds, kind of like, more like a MacBook Air kind of thing. You know, it's, has a lot more bells and whistles to it. It could spell check. It could connect to the internet. It could do all that stuff. So I just wanted to throw more support behind that.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Smith, do you have anything for us?
No, I, I would also like to throw support behind that. I thought Chief Griffin did a great job answering all our questions. And all the information was very clear. And I'd like to thank the Measure S Committee. They, they've done a great job. And Mr. Weir, who's also put, you know, a lot of hours in putting all this together. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so for me, I think we need to use a bit of caution when talking about the Measure S funds and spending them on something other than we've stated explicitly that we're going to be spending it on. I think that we'll lose a lot of support really quickly if we start spending those funds on things other than police, fire, streets, and pool. So I think we need to be careful about that. The, the idea about a rainy fun, rainy day fund, I, I do believe that we need to ensure that our rainy day fund is up to at least the 25%. Whether those funds are going to come, well, they're all going to be general fund, funds. Whether those come from Measure S to, to supplement the extra rainy day fund that's required in order to bring it up to the proper level. Or it's just general funds being backfilled from other places. I do believe we need to have a fully funded rainy day fund eventually, or at least me working towards that. And that will include the Measure S funds as well. That's part of the general fund. So we, in essence, we will have to have So we, in essence, we will have to have those funds come from somewhere. Um, that's important to me because the rain does come eventually. I mean, COVID happened. Uh, we, we just need to be cautious and, and be uh, you know, wise with the, the taxpayers' funds, and I think that that's part of it. Uh, Axiom, uh, the tasers and the cameras, I, I think that that's huge. Um, our officers need to make sure, we need to make sure our officers have the support they need and the, the proper equipment. I agree. I, I think that that's a no-brainer. Um, the premium uh, package, I think, is what we need. Um, the extra training, the, the benefit that that brings to our officers is, is priceless. Yeah, I mean, uh, e- even in our training, they say that you revert back to your lowest level of training. And so if we have a higher standard of training, I think that that's going to give our officers a far better chance when it comes to um, a dangerous situation. And we need to give our officers the best we can. Um, I, I like the, the plan as far as incrementally stepping up um, with the, you know, a position every year, that I think that makes a lot of sense. Uh, with the police department, with the fire department, um, and then uh, the, the thing that concerns me though is, I'm not sure if we're putting enough into replacement uh, the replacement fund for fire department, for the fire department, should I say. Um, fire engines are expensive, and we're eventually going to have to replace those um, those really important rigs. So uh, I don't know what the answer is. Um, I, I would like to see additional funds uh, put away for that purpose. Um, I like the streets project, uh, or the street plan. I think that that's that's going to be the most noticeable uh, out of all of these, I think, um, is, is getting our crews out there or getting a contractor out there and getting our streets looking their best. And not just looking their best, but when you drive over it, not, you know, breaking your vehicle in a pothole. Um, I think that's, that's huge, and, and I, I support that. Uh, let's see, what else we got? Um, as far as our fire department, I, I agree with uh, ProTem Inscore. I, I think that we, we need to continue to make it about the volunteers and make sure that they're getting the support that they need and increasing the number of volunteers to the best of our ability. And, and I think that supporting them with the, that monetary support is, that's a part of it. So, I, I sup- I think that that's, that part of the plan is good. Um, I think that that's all of my notes. Uh, I just wanna thank the Measure S committee uh, and the Ca- City Council for getting together for all these extra meetings. Uh, it's been challenging, but uh, I think that we've had a lot of good conversations. And I think that we've really gotten a lot done uh, for the betterment of our community, and we've excuse me, drag, right throat, but um, I, I really think that moving forward, our community is going to look at our plans, and they're gonna look at, at them and think, you know, this is pretty well thought out. We, we didn't just throw this together. And uh, I appreciate all of your hard work, both council and committee. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, uh, Church Long and the members of the committee, members of the council for uh, for all of the, the thoughts and insights. I think we do have, uh, you know, a, a pretty good direction, and we'll still need to, to make sure we take, you know, public comment before we end this meeting. But what I'd like to do now is, I wasn't sure exactly where we're gonna end up or where the discussion was going to be. I do think from an official standpoint, we might need one more quick meeting just with the, just with the Measure S folks. What I'd like to do is, I'll create a, just a summary of everything. So you have it in one list. You guys adopt that as your recommendation for uh, for this next fiscal year. Uh, we can do it in a few days, but that way I can send you this, I can send you that list that you would actually be taking action on and adopting. And that way it's uh, it is, uh, it is complete, and there's a nice solid recommendation that's not up for interpretation. But that's up for discussion as well, so up for.
So you mean a meeting just with Measure S committee?
It would do, the council does not need to be there, but yes.
Then I'm for it. I think it's a great plan.
Like.
You're welcome.
I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm with Mayor ProTem Inscore. I think they need to meet without us anyways, so they can, yeah.
Absolutely. That's what they're there for. You guys have done a great job. Come, bring it together and, and, and put it, put it down and give it to us a re- recommendation so we can dive into budget. No, eh, I mean, I'm joking about, if I don't have to go to the meeting, that's, that's, that's a bonus, but um.
Yeah, that way at least it's, it's clear. You guys have now seen it. You'd have something to think about, and I can send you the, you know, the spreadsheet, everything's.
And go through it line by line one more time.
Okay, what were you thinking, Mr. Weir?
Well, we can reach out, uh, but I'd like to do it fairly soon, so maybe at the end of this week, you know, we'll need to agendize it and whatnot. But uh, but, but something that, you know, in that uh, order of magnitude, so that way we can turn around. Cause we're gonna need to build our budgets and have a workshop with the council on May twenty-fourth. So, we, if it works for your schedules at the end of this week, say Thursday, uh, five thirty, I, uh, Chair, Chair, Vice Chair Khan is loving it, it seems like.
I'm free on Thursday. How about you, Cindy?
There's gonna be a thumbs up from uh, from Committee Member Matts.
Righty's good. Ernie? You're, you're um, muted, Mr. Perry.
Well, good, cause you didn't hear me cuss then. Okay, what time?
At us five thirty, Sam.
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yes.
Thursday, April.
Can you fit us into your busy schedule, Mr. Perry?
Uh, I'm actually looking at my wife's busy schedule. I'm her driver.
That retired life, you know?
Uh, I'll have to get back to you. It looks like I might have to be in Grants Pass.
And we could do it, we could do another day if that works better. Uh, we have council meeting on Monday, May third. Uh, we, we could.
Let me see what I can do.
Okay. We'll, we'll reach out, we'll try to find a, we'll try to find a time, but it will be relatively quick, so we can
Okay.
Get that recommendation.
Sorry.
And you're gonna send us what documentation to review before that meeting, Eric?
Basically, my thought was I can send you the spreadsheet, so you can see it all, how it all lays out. You can take a look at the numbers, and then I was going to put basically a, a, a draft recommendation from what I've heard tonight. That would articulate exactly what those expenses are just in this next year, cause that's really what we're looking for is, you need to see the five-year plan, but we're looking for a recommendation for just this next year. So you'll have both of those pieces hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
All right, do we have anything else from uh, anybody for the good of the city? Sounds like we're wrapping it up.
The, uh, Mayor did have a great meeting with Elk Valley Rancheria today, uh, and we discussed the RACE grant, the uh, the former build. And so uh, they are looking to partner with the city once again, so we're still working out details there. But that grant is due July twelfth, uh, and so we're gonna be turning our attention towards that. That's uh, we're looking at the match piece. There, there's a possibility of a twenty percent match, but I think for us, that could be waived. So we're still looking at some of those requirements. So again, just keep trying on the, on that Front Street piece and trying to keep our options open and put ourselves in the best position that we can.
Excellent. That would be a game changer if we could get that greened.
Yeah.
And it's so great that uh, we have excellent partners uh, in Elk Valley Rancheria, so.
Absolutely.
So if you don't have anything further, I will adjourn. Well, you know what, I'm just gonna say thank you again. Oh, Ernie.
I can make Thursday at five, five thirty.
You can?
Yep.
Awesome.
Perfect. I, I just wanna thank you all again uh, for your hard work. Uh, this meeting and, and all the, the past meetings, they've been grueling at times, but we've gotten through. And um, I think that the people of Crescent City are going to appreciate your co- um, your participation in this process, uh, and, and making sure that we are spending these funds wisely. So, thank you again, and I will adjourn this meeting to our next scheduled meeting, May third, twenty twenty-one at six o'clock. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.